Councilmember Garcia?
Here.
Councilmember Kennedy?
Here.
Councilmember Vias?
Here.
Mayor Protan McEckren?
Here.
Mayor Cox?
I've gotten so much information here, give me a moment. Well, these are all revisions, revisions, revisions. Back to five o'clock, a closed session. Before we do so, this is a point in time if individuals are present that want to address the City Council on items not on the agenda. They can also, at the regular six o'clock meeting, after the council meeting starts, they can address the council at that time, at the end of the agenda, or as agenda items come up. At this time, though, we have a request for Mr. Robert Richardson, who would like to address the council at this time. Mr. Richardson, you have three minutes. Come to the microphone. And we have Mr. Richardson's name and address on his card form. Thank you for filling that out.
Yes, sir. To the council and Mr. Mayor, my name is Robert Richardson. I moved here about 23 years ago as an individual that wanted to retire here in Victorville. I bought a home on 12826 Partola Street, and I took time out to take and build the home the way I wanted it to be. I had neighbors that moved in right after I moved in, and I had neighbors that was living there just before I got there. My problem today is investors. How that the investors has the right to just about do anything they want to do in any neighborhood, seem as if. And what I mean by that, they can rent the people that they didn't vet them at all. And the neighbors moves in, they could be dope heads, they could be selling dope until someone in the neighborhood make a complaint. It's when the police department find out, or the individuals, before they get caught. Also, in my neighborhood, there are problems with investors. I've been living in this place for 23 years. My fence line happened to be my property line. Investors came in, took down the fence line, I called code enforcement. Code enforcement told me there's nothing they could do about it, but it's wrong. But it's nothing they can do about it. And before that, I had gone to the next door neighbor, spoke to him concerning, removing that wooden fence and putting up a block fence. They said, "No, I don't want to move it, but it's the property line." So I couldn't move it. I went to code enforcement, said, "Mr. Richardson, say he's right. If he don't give you permission to move it, you cannot move it." I said, "Okay." So I built a block fence six inches inside of the wooden fence. When investors bought in, they took the fence down, didn't get a request from me, nor a permit from no one to remove the fence, which is the property line. And they removed the fence, I called them up and said, "Listen, sir, you didn't say anything about moving that fence. That's the property line." They said, "We'll get back with you." I've been waiting, I've gone to code enforcement, code enforcement said, "No, Mr. Richardson, we can do nothing about that. Say, that's a civil suit." But when I built that fence, code enforcement told me that I couldn't take the fence down. That's why I built the block fence. Now, that's been over 23 years ago, but now investors can come in, move anything that they want to, and do just about anything, and when you call code enforcement, they say, "We don't have the code to do it." I said, "Well, I'm going before the council, see what the council, see can we get some information concerning this?" So they said, "Well, you do that. You do that." So I have been frustrated with investors. They don't have any kind of information to tell people that's moving in, that's renting, that what you can do with cats, what you can do with dogs. They just let them do just anything that they want to do. Feces everywhere. You know and I know that Victorville have winds that blows all the time. And when they don't clean up behind the dogs, that stuff granulate, and it gets in the air. And a lot of the complaints also in my neighborhood is that people don't clean up behind their dogs. Their cats run wild, animal control cannot do anything of catching cats. They don't have a code to do that, but they have a code, they say, "Mr. Richardson, what you have to do is buy a trap. Or if you rent a trap from us, it costs $50." But that create problem.
Mr. Richardson, we're going to have to ask you to wrap it up, please.
That create problems because if you catch a neighbor that you've asked them to keep their cat from out of your yard, from urinating and all this over into your yard, when you put them in a trap, and that cat is squealing and hollering, you got to wait the animal control to come, that create problems with your next door neighbor. So it's a lot of problems going on in Victorville. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm sure our city manager took note of your comments, and I'm sure someone will be contacting you. Madam Clerk, was there anyone else to address the council?
No, there isn't.
At this time, we go into an executive session. Mr. Attorney?
Thank you, Mayor Cox. We have three closed sessions this evening. Two are existing litigation, one for the Airport Authority, one for the City Council. That is existing litigation pursuant to government code 54956.9D1. The case name and number is set forth on the agenda. The third item is for the successor agency of the Victorville Redevelopment Agency, and it is anticipated litigation pursuant to government code 54956.9D1, and it concerns one case. And to the extent there's reportable action, we would report it at the conclusion of the closed session or at the commencement of the six o'clock meeting.
Any questions, Attorney? If there's no questions at 5:07, we will adjourn to executive session. We are calling the meeting to order. If you'll take your seats, please. Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Councilmember Garcia?
Here.
Councilmember Kennedy?
Here.
Councilmember Vias?
Here.
Mayor Protan McEckren?
Here.
Mayor Cox?
Here. We had a closed session beginning at five o'clock. Mr. City Attorney?
Thank you, Mayor Cox. We had three closed session items this evening. The first was for the Airport Authority. It was existing litigation pursuant to government code 54956.9D1. And the second one was the City Council action under the same code section, both related to the same case, and that information is set forth on the agenda along with the case number. And then in addition, we had a closed session item for the successor agency to the Victorville Redevelopment Agency pursuant to government code 54956.9D1. And at this moment, there is no reportable action with respect to any of those three items.
Okay. Thank you very much, Mr. City Attorney. At this time, I'm going to ask Sister Lindsay Haas, Mesa Linda Ward of the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter Day Saints, to come forward for the invocation. I'll ask everyone to rise for the invocation, stay standing after that pledge of allegiance by the Victorville Police Chief Sam Lucia.
Our dear heavenly Father, we are grateful for this wonderful day. We are grateful for all of our many blessings, Father. We're grateful for this time that the Victorville City Council can come together and be able to counsel with one another and be able to discuss. We're grateful for each of the members and for their service and for their leadership, and we pray that they will be able to be guided today. We are grateful for the wonderful country that we have to live in and for this city, and we pray for all the people in this city, that they will be able to be watched over. And we are grateful for all the many blessings that we enjoy, Father, and we know that they come from thee, and we say these things in the name of thy son, Jesus Christ, amen.
Thank you for the invocation. Thank you, Sam. We've got to lead the agenda tonight. We'll try to move as quickly as we can on this. We have a staff introduction, we have presentations. Before we do that, Don Trapp, could you come forward and introduce a new fire chief?
Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, staff, just wanted to take a first, quick moment, just say it's been my extreme honor and pleasure to serve as your fire chief for the last two years. The commitment and dedication of everyone that I've worked with, from the elected members, from Doug Robinson and Keith Metzler and all the staff, has just been amazing and outstanding, the commitment and the hard work towards the city. I've been proud to be a part of that, you know, for the last two years, and just say that, you know, my commitment, county fires' commitment to the city doesn't waver at all. We're still going to be here to support you and everything we can do. Which brings me to introducing your next fire chief, which will be Division Chief Dan Muncy, because I'll be moving down the hill, took a promotion to move to our headquarters, so brings the chance for Dan Muncy.
It's an honor to be introduced tonight. I first started with the city of Victorville when they came over to county fires as a captain, and was promoted to battalion chief and came back and worked as battalion chief in this division. Victorville is probably one of the best places in county fire to work. We love the citizens here, we love our relationship with the city, and it's absolute an honor to take over from my mentor and continue with that good relationship. It was very nice being introduced to you guys tonight. I look forward to interacting with you guys in the future and meeting the city of Victorville's needs. Thank you.
Chief Muncy, welcome.
Thanks.
Thank you for your comments. I'm going to come down below. Microphone is working. There we go. Thank you very much. The first presentation is a proclamation to Lena Russell, Donate Life Ambassador. Is Lena Russell here? Oh, wonderful. Wonderful. This is a proclamation, whereas organ tissue, marrow, and blood donations are life-giving acts recognized nationwide as expressions of compassion to those in need, and whereas more than 121,000 individuals nationwide, and more than 21,000 in California, are currently on the national organ transplant waiting list. Wow. And every 90 minutes, one person dies while waiting due to the shortage of donated organs, and the need for donated organs is especially urgent in Hispanic and African-American communities. Whereas, more than 600,000 units of blood per year are needed to meet the needs in California, and at any given time, 6,000 patients are in need of volunteer marrow donors, and whereas a single individual's donation of the heart, lungs, liver, kidneys, pancreas, and small intestines can save up to eight lives, donations of tissue can save and heal the lives of up to 50 others, and a single blood donation can help three people in need. Whereas millions of lives each year are saved and healed by donors of organs, tissue, marrow, and blood, and whereas the spirit of giving and decision to donate are not restricted by age or medical condition, and over 10 million Californians have signed up with the state-authorized Donate Life California Registry to ensure their wish-to-be organ and tissue donors are honored, and whereas, California residents can sign up with the Donate Life California Registry when applying for or renewing their driver's license or ID cards at the California Department of Motor Vehicle. Now, I, Jim Cox, on behalf of the city of Victorville, do hereby join the other members of the city council, and recognizing the month of April 2014 in the city of Victorville as DMV Donate Life California Month, and encourage all Californians to check yes by applying for or renewing their driver's license or ID cards, or by signing up at www.donatelife.california.org. Congratulations. Thank you very much.
Yes.
Comments?
Yes. I really thank the city of Victorville, and especially the mayor and all the city council people who have been so supportive, and it's been an honor to be your ambassador. And this is my first year to be an ambassador for all the cities up here, and I want to introduce the Arnold family, just to show you how important it is to be a donor. Paisley here, who got hers heart one year ago, March 17th, St. Patrick's Day, about 5:30 a.m., uh-huh, and I got my lung two years ago. And my donor, I was fortunate enough later to find out, meet the family, and my donor, she saved 52 lives by donating everything, which is very rare. So my goal is the education and promotion of people signing up and getting educated and get rid of all the stories they hear out there about being a donor. It is so serious when we're losing 18 people a day. This is not a disease that we're looking for, a cure. We have a cure. It's called transplant. And it's so sad to meet all these people, and you're sitting and waiting. About three years ago today, I was in a wheelchair. I almost cry every time I say this. I was on oxygen. I had no hope. There was no hope for me, zero. I had made my funeral arrangements. I couldn't have got up and walked across his room. I was on the transplant list, and Cedar Sineen, which is one of the few people that do lung transplants, said the average weight is two to three years. It's not just fighting a match, like it was, she had the same problem. We have to find the size to fit in her chest and to fit a lung in my chest. And because of that, our chances are horrible. So there wasn't any hope for me at all. I was on that list three days, and Cedar said, "You broke the record." And I said, "There was a reason I got a second chance, and that's to stand before you and talk to you about educating and saving lives. I don't want to see any more babies or any loved ones die. There's no reason for it. We're throwing organs to me in the grave or cremating them. It's unnecessary. Just the tissue alone is wonderful for breast cancers and for burn patients. Thank you so much for this."
We have a presentation of a proclamation to Jeffrey Horn. Jeffrey Horn, come up, please. I had a memorandum here that I hadn't seen before, and anyway, I'll skip that and go directly to this. We have another proclamation, and all these are really important. You know, if we can get through that first one without shedding tears, the rest of them come easier, I think. But this is, I'm going to read this, Jeffrey, bear with me. Whereas it takes an entire community to protect our children, in 2013, more than 29,000 children in San Bernardino County were referred to San Bernardino County Children and Family Services for suspected child abuse neglect. For this reason, April 2014 has been proclaimed as Child Abuse Prevention Month by the county, state, and federal governments to promote community involvement in preventing child abuse, and whereas, by continually raising public awareness and promoting community responsibility, we can reduce the actual number of child abuse cases. Every child is entitled to be loved, cared for, nurtured, and to feel secure. All children have the right to receive the care, protection, and guidance that a family provides, to be free from harm, and to have their physical, emotional, and educational needs met. Whereas effective child abuse prevention programs succeed because of partnerships created among social service agencies, schools, religious, and civic organizations, law enforcement agencies, the business community, and others in the field who are dedicated, compassionate, and skilled individuals working under enormous pressure to protect children, and whereas the prevention of child abuse requires rigorous solutions, energy, strength, determination, and commitment on the part of concerned citizens in the community. And whereas, as caring citizens, we should become more aware of the negative aspects of child abuse within the community, we must act as advocates for these children to support and expand programs that promote recognition and report mistreatment. Now, therefore, I, Jim Cox, on behalf of the city and the city council, do hereby join the other members of the city council to proclaim April 2014 as Child Abuse Prevention Month in the city of Victorville, and encourage all citizens to participate in the event and join the efforts to end child abuse. I present this to you, sir, and would you like to make some comments?
Yes, please. Thank you very much. That's very good. I just wanted to share that I, my name's Jeffrey Horn, I do work for Children and Family Services, but actually, tonight, I am representing the Children's Network, which is an organization that's been in place since about 1986, working with all the different partners that we talked about, school, and law enforcement, and hospitals, and, you know, that's the council that I said I'm representing that agency for this. And like I said, this affects every community, and we need, you know, there's the phrase, "It takes a village," and that's very much what we want to promote at this month. And just as far as the city of Victorville, they just gave me some stats, particularly for the city of Victorville in the year 2013, there was 2,480 referrals for child abuse in the city that the county responded to, and again, all those other agencies and partners responded to that, and we really need all the help we can get, so I appreciate the attention. The other thing I wanted to note is I had given the city clerk, the blue ribbon is the symbol for child abuse, and I have some blue ribbon pins that I gave to the city clerk for the council members and the staff there to promote that, and that anytime you see that symbol, that's the symbol for prevent child abuse. The only other thing that I really wanted to share with you, which are these, too small to make the call, and these are a couple of, these are posters that we are placing all around the county, at the schools, hospitals, in your parks and rec, any of the public things, because if you call just 211, they will connect you to the child abuse hotline. And, you know, if there's any report or any suspicion of something going on, you are our eyes and ears. We only know those 2,480 that came into the city of Victorville came from individual calls, and that's the only way we know what's going on. We don't go out and search these things, they come to us. So I would just really thank everyone for being our eyes and ears, and really thank the council and the council member, the mayor, for having me here tonight. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We have a third proclamation. Honoring Fair Housing Month proclamation. Zamber Somerville? Ah, hello. How are you? I'm not going to read all of it. It's really important, but it's, we have read this, I think you'll get the gist of how important this is when I begin reading it. Whereas the fair housing is a right emphasized by the U.S. Congress, beginning with the Civil Rights Act of 1968 and the amendments of '88, and whereas the Fair Housing Act and its amendments of 1988 prohibit discrimination in housing because of race, color, religion, sex, age, handicap, familiar status, national origin, or personal traits, belief, or characteristics that are unrelated to rental or sales of property, and whereas 2014 marks the 46th anniversary of the Civil Rights Act of 1968. And it's a milestone every year that we're grateful for. Whereas the city of Victorville has participated in the federal community development block grant program, which you will hear us refer to as the CDBG program, has made a commitment to equal housing opportunities, a condition of life in our community that can and should be achieved, and whereas as part of the CDBG program, the city of Victorville, through its partnerships with the Inland Fair Housing and Mediation Board, assesses fair housing needs in the community, conducts fair housing workshops, and promotes fair and equal access to rental and sales, lending, and housing, and whereas the city of Victorville recognizes the Inland Fair Housing and Mediation Board as the fair housing program, which is a public-private partnership with housing industry associations in support in supporting the fair housing laws. I, Jim Cox, representing the city council in the city of Victorville, do hereby join the other members of the council and recognize the month of April 2014 as Fair Housing Month in the city of Victorville, recognizing efforts by housing industry associations and nonprofit agencies, including Inland Fair Housing and Mediation Board, to further fair housing in our community. And I present this proclamation to you, would you like to make some comments?
Thank you. We're really excited to declare April is Fair Housing Month. We've been celebrating that ever since 1968. Fair Housing Advocates have been celebrating Fair Housing Month. Fair Housing is really important because where you live has such a big impact on your quality of life, the type of opportunities that you have, the schools that you go to. And so we really want to emphasize the importance of that. Our agency actually helps to promote fair housing throughout the community. We do education and classes. We actually help individuals to file complaints when they think they have experienced discrimination. We do investigation. This month, we're wearing blue bracelets that say, "Dare to be fair," and we're sharing those with the council members. If you would celebrate with us the progress that we've made in the 46 years since the passing of that act, and our commitment to continue to do. passing of that act, and our commitment to continue to dare to be fair in our, and ending housing discrimination in our communities.
Very much. Please give her a hand. I'm going to go back to the dais. We have one other item, which is a thank you presentation. I'm not sure why we're getting thanked, but Regina Weatherspoon Bell, if you would like to come forward. Do you want me to stay here, or do you want me to go up there? Go up there.
I love you. Good evening. I really appreciate this opportunity to make this special presentation to the city of Victorville on behalf of the Dreamers, Visionaries, and Leaders Project. I am Regina Weatherspoon Bell, and I'm the founder of the DVL Project, which began in 2009. And I'm joined this evening by members of my team. Mike Kernan is not here, but he was the one responsible for the video display. Maggie V., and Ben Johnston, and Teresa Polly Shelcroft also make up my team. Our primary purpose is to recognize the positive contributions that people of color, and specifically Hispanic and African Americans, have made to our American history. We are committed to not only the history, but the building of legacies by honoring our past and investing in our future. This year, the city of Victorville graciously hosted our Know Your History video display. And Mayor Cox, you even lent your talent on screen to that project. We received such positive responses from the community. We believe that this type of partnership between local government and cultural service organizations truly benefit our community. So this evening, I, along with my team, and our 2014 Dreamers, Visionaries, and Leaders honorees, who are standing behind me, Mr. Garner Morris was our lifetime achievement honoree, Dr. Helena Johnson is with me, Mr. Curtis Green, Mr. Derek King, Ms. Roxanne Young, Doctors Paul and Barbara Williams are here, Reverend Rita Jackson, Mr. William Barnes, Dr. Joseph Morris, Mr. Eddie Strings Martin, Councilman Jermaine Wright, Superintendent Elvin Moeman, and Ms. Malika Wright, who could not make it this evening. They all stand here with me, physically and in spirit. We're here to say thank you for your participation, for your partnership and your support by presenting this recognition to the mayor and council. I also want to say thank you to your wonderful staff, especially to Doug Robertson, to Rhonda, who we all know, she's the front, the first face you see when you come through the door, Carol Lee Bates, Christian Gunnert, and Monica Peterson. So we want to say thank you, and we look forward to continuing our relationship with the city of Victorville. We also have some DVDs, because Monica asked for a couple of extra copies, so we have those. And Doug, I have some extra lapel pins that I'd like for you to share, one for you, and would you share with Monica and the rest of them? I'm going to read this. It says, "Presented to the city of Victorville, an appreciation for your partnership and support of the Dreamers, Visionaries, and Leaders 2014 Know Your History Display, April 1st, 2014. Thank you very much."
Thank you. We do have a very good working relationship. I want to thank each and every one of you for working so hard to make sure it's a success. Thank you. Okay, now we will move on with the agenda, and we'll have the presentation of the agenda to the council. Madam City Clerk.
City Council of the city of Victorville welcomes the public's participation in tonight's meeting. Persons who wish to address the council on a specific item or any item that does not appear on the agenda are requested to complete one of the white speaker cards located in the council chambers lobby and give it to the city clerk prior to the meeting. The mayor will call upon each individual who has submitted a speaker card. Pursuant to Government Code Section 54954.3, state law prohibits the council from addressing any issue not previously included on the agenda. The council may receive testimony and set the matter to a subsequent meeting. Comments are to be limited to three minutes per speaker or less as deemed necessary by the mayor. Communications are to be addressed directly to the city council. Individual comments to staff or members of the audience are not permitted. Any individual or group who engages in disruptive conduct during the meeting will be removed from the chambers by order of the mayor. Thank you for your cooperation. All documents to be considered for approval at this meeting are before the city council. And there are several revisions that have been submitted for tonight's agenda. Those are available at the dais and as, well, for the public. Agenda revision number one is regarding appeal hearing item A3. It's a request from Briggs Law for withdrawal of the appeal with a contingency. Agenda item, revision is, revision number two is regarding agenda item B1. It's supplemental information regarding fee comparisons. Revision three is concerning item B2, the revised agreement provided by the city attorney. Revision number four is related to item A3, and it is a map showing Mojave Drive. Revision number five is related to item D6, and it's a letter from Carlos Rodriguez of the BIA. Revision number six relates to item A2, a map of Luna and Highway 395, and a letter from attorney Diana Carloni. Revision number seven concerns item B2, and it is a letter from Southern California, Edison. And those are all the revisions I have. Mr. Mayor.
I hope that's all the revisions. Thank you, Madam Clerk. We have received, this council has received five or six or seven pieces of information right at the last moment. We're going to do our best to go through it and understand it and read it as we're handling these items. The first item that we have is item A1. City Council Appeal Hearing, Call to Hear the Appeal of the Planning Commission's Approval Case PLN 13-00005. A site plan and conditional use permit to allow for the development of an eight-pump gas station and 4,860-square-foot convenience store as part of an approved shopping center that has been previously environmental assessed on property located at the southeast corner of Highway 395 and Luna Road. Appellate Creed 21. Attorney Corey Briggs. Munam Maida, applicant. Staff, could you lighten us a little bit on this?
Yes, the app, the appellant Creed 21 and the applicant Munam Maida have come to a resolution, and the withdrawal of the appeal is based on the council approving that condition of approval. So we've done that with a resolution. You would adopt the resolution denying the appeal. However, it does modify the approval to adopt the condition of approval that they both agreed on.
I'm, I'm sorry. Explain that, because we, they're going to withdraw the appeal if we have an agreement.
The appeal was based on the project being inconsistent with the general plan because there is a general plan policy which requires commercial developments to install solar to the maximum extent feasible. They, that's what Creed 21's-
I'm sorry, I'm with, what does the maximum extent feasible mean?
That's what we have left-
To me, it means it's not a chance in the world that I could afford to do it. It means different things to different people. Do we define that in a place?
That's exactly right. However, the courts have been siding with Creed 21 or Corey Briggs by way of previous projects installing solar. So they, the courts have looked at it and said, "Well, like, he's popular for suing Walmart." They've looked at other Walmarts and said, "You've installed solar on other Walmarts. Why can't you do it at the Victorville Walmart?" And they've been successful at doing that, so.
Is this because of the city's general plan, or is this because of state or federal law, or is this because Victorville's trying to be a good guy and, and create energy?
Combination, combination probably of, in 2008, when the general plan was being, being adopted, Corey Briggs sued us, sued the city, and had certain conditions or general plan policies inserted into the general plan. And at that time, it was tough. In fact, staff added that wording, "to the maximum extent feasible," to try and allow developers to tell us what that feasibility meant. However, now we're having courts do that.
I was not here in 2008, but I recall that occurred. I'm not sure what the discussion was at the city council. I personally find it strange that the city would require individuals to generate electricity when we are not the PUC, and not involved, and have no say-so on the generation of electricity except for our own permits that we have with the state. And I would ask staff to pull out the paperwork, at least for me, and, and based upon what little I know, why that is in our general plan. I have no idea why it's there. There may be an absolute good reason. I don't know that at this point in time. If I were voting on that tonight, it wouldn't be a part of my vote to do that. I think it's intrusion on the private enterprise, but that's, remains to be seen. What we have to deal with is an item that they're agreement, but we have to hear the appeal, because if we don't, we have no jurisdiction. If we have no jurisdiction, there can't be any conditions at all. Is that right, Mr. Attorney?
That is correct. The request from Mr. Briggs to withdraw the appeal doesn't really work, because if you withdraw the appeal, we have nothing to consider. I think it should be interpreted more as a indication of a willingness not to continue to pursue and challenge the project. I think you would have to consider the appeal in order to, as you indicated, consider the conditions that are being recommended.
All right. Before we hear from other comments from the council, we will open this up, because we don't want to lose jurisdiction. If we do, the matter is over with, as far as we're concerned. So we retain jurisdiction to make a determination if we want to rule on it at the end of the hearing. Does anyone want to speak on behalf of the applicant?
Yes. Thank you, Mayor Cox. I have my card here. Sorry, it's been a long day. I submitted a case to a jury at 4:20 today and made it back here to the council meeting. I represent Munam Maida and Maida Maida with respect to this fueling station that's being, a project that's being considered for 395 and Luna. We did receive the appeal from Creed 21. We reviewed the provisions of the appeal. We reviewed the general plan. It was our determination that we could propose a solar project for this, for this fueling station project because of the fact that it could make economic sense, and it could meet some of the provisions of the general plan, which we found may result in litigation if we did not consider them seriously. We have entered into an agreement. We are asking the council to accept the additional provision that we voluntarily undertake. We think it makes economic sense for the applicant. It makes good environmental sense for the concerns of Creed 21. And we would ask the council to approve that condition, modify the conditions of approval for the project, and deny this appeal.
And exactly what is the project again?
It is a fueling station and market at the corner of 395 and Luna.
I want to ask the staff. I go into a fueling station, and there's signs, "Turn off the engine, turn off," they don't want a spark, they don't want anything, there are fumes, there are gas, and we're going to generate electricity there?
Well, Mayor Cox, the proposal that was secured and was reviewed by the applicant and the appellant did not place any solar, any electrical, electricity generating apparatus on the fueling station itself. It is on the market that is located a distance from. There was not the ability, nor the financial ability, to put any type of electrical generating equipment on any part of the fueling station. It is solely on the market that accompanies the station.
Thank you for, thank you for that clarification. Are there any questions from the council members to the, to the applicant?
Does this, is this process getting us into the business of requiring development to have solar projects? Is that what we're now doing?
That's what the general plan says.
Is it?
Yeah. To the maximum extent feasible, which is not particularly-
I think as a general plan, we're saying, "We think solar's great, and we encourage people to do it."
Right.
Are we going to see this as a condition now on developments?
To the extent that projects come forward, that an attorney is able to argue either favorably, or at least take enough time favorably, that he or his group believes it's not to the maximum extent feasible, then yes, we are likely to see more of these.
I'm not sure it's limited to just solar. The requirement is to generate or self-generate electricity.
Right.
It's not just the city's requirement, that I understand. This has all come about because state and federal law requires that any new development research the possibility of whether or not it's feasible and it makes sense to do it. And if they don't do it, then they open themselves up to be sued. And in this case, they open themselves up to be sued, so the entity, the developer or the place, the market gets sued. So they're coming forward and saying, "Yeah, we, we did our study. It is feasible. We should do it because it's being required by the state, not so much the city, but we should have it in our general plan to do that." Is that my understanding?
That's correct. The general plan was written in response to AB 32, a requirement of the state of California.
I'm ready to vote.
We do have a mechanical issue here. We can't allow it to withdraw, because if it's withdrawn, we can't vote on anything.
That, that is correct. It's, we have to go through, if there's no other comments, we will close. Or you have any further comments from the, the appell-
If, just real briefly on the close, Mr. Mayor and council members, we would ask that you consider our request to amend the conditions of approval, to allow for this new condition that has been set forth by agreement of the parties, to first be included into the approval of this project. We would then request that the balance of the appeal be denied. But not until the condition is approved and in the project.
Clarification. I noticed that we got a, the request for withdrawal on agenda item A3, but I don't have on the dais in front of me anything relating to agenda item A1.
I believe the A1 is already in the agenda package. It, that, that request from Mr. Briggs came-
Hey, I'm sorry. I was thinking that it was given to us tonight.
And I think the staff report and the proposed resolution already addresses the amendment of the condition to impose the, the solar requirement.
So the motion before us is going to be to deny the appeal and add this condition? That, am I getting that right?
That is correct. And, and the resolution that you have, if you adopt Resolution 14008, already addresses the denial and the inclusion of that condition.
So do I need to make the motion?
Motion to adopt that resolution, assuming you want to deny. Yes, it'd be Resolution Number 14008, deny.
Motion by Councilmember Vias, second by Councilmember Kennedy.
So by me voting yes, I'm denying it.
You are, and, and you are still imposing that condition.
Motion carries unanimously.
And for the council and public's benefit, based on not just comments tonight, but also comments that I've heard privately from multiple council members, we are going to take a look at the general plan to see if there's a way to tighten up that language to make it easier for developers to comply, so that we don't have to go through this demonstration repeatedly.
I, I appreciate that, because when I got to maximum extent feasible, that's a, I assumed that a bunch of attorneys got together in a part of the Full Employment Attorney Act and put that in there. I don't know how you define it. I couldn't, I can't. But, not an attorney. Item number two, thank you very much, everyone, for that. Item number two, information concerning the appeal for single-serve alcoholic beverage. And this is, this is also a hearing in regard to the same operation, Munam Maida. And I raised questions at the last council meeting before I opened this up, because I wasn't really familiar with the pros and cons of the single service. And so I want to make a disclosure that I asked for additional information. We have a lot of information in the agenda. I also like, asked for a tour for those who allow single-serve and those who don't. So I wanted to preface this, that I did receive the information, I did take the tour. At this point in time, I'm going to, to- At this point in time, I'm going to ask if the council member, if the city manager has additional comments in regard to this item.
I don't have any specific comments. We do have the two sheriff's deputies who are here. Should you have any questions about the reasons why they originally recommended that the city adopt an ordinance banning single serve for all future development?
For information, for the record, and for those in the audience that didn't follow the last meeting, it's a new convenience store and fueling station made the request for beer and wine, and they're appealing the planning commission's determination of restricting the single-serve alcoholic beverage. Is that correct, Mr. Manager?
Yes, that is correct.
And are there any questions? If no questions, councilman, open this up because it's an appeal hearing. Would you like to speak to this item?
Good evening again, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. My name is Diana Carloni, and I represent the applicant and the appellant, Munameta. We have, as part of the appellant's presentation, three individuals who speak tonight, myself, the actual owner of the business, and the project architect. Because this is an appeal hearing, I'm assuming we're not relegated to this three-minute time because we have information we'd like the council to consider. We're going to start with Mr. Munameta, who will speak with you regarding the nature and type of product he sells. Stino, the project architect, will go second. And then I will close with some additional argument regarding the application of the single-serve ordinance and some of what we believe might be alternatives and a more fair application to all businesses new and existing.
Okay. Before you start, I'll clarify an item Ms. Carloni indicated, refer to the three minutes. For those individuals that's going to address the council, that's not an agenda item, but they come up and we can't enter into the debate, we adhere to the three minutes. We try to keep all presentations short, but we understand where people have put up their money, they're going through the permit, they're developing, but by restricting it to the three minutes, we sometimes, it would be very possible we would cut the individual off and not get important information to make the decision. So we do allow time to make sure that we get the information that individuals have spoken their peat, spoken their mind, and give us the information that they have. But we do ask that we keep it as short as possible. Thank you, and go ahead.
Thank you. We understand the concerns.
Good evening, Mayor, council members, staff. May I use this counter here to...
Sure. Got chilled? Got chilled?
After I read the ordinance that Victorville adopted, wanted to bring some of the items that I carry in my stores. And I cater most of those items, and those sizes, about 300 to 400 kinds that I carry in the Hisperia Oak Hills area and in the Apple Valley, Apple Valley Road, and Ecoloma. It's a Chevron gas station. We get customers from all over, Pinion Hills, Atlanta, Victorville, Spring Valley. They all come shop at those stores. The only option they have beside those stores is they got to go to Bevmo and shop at Rancho Cucamonga off of Foothill. Two stores there, one of them is Bevmo, one of them is Total Wines. These bottles you're looking at, they are about between 16 ounces to basically 24, 26 ounces per bottle, single serve. Those bottles are German and craft beers, and they average, some of these bottles, example like this, is a $29 bottle. Some bottles there, the minimum you're looking at, between $9 to $30 a bottle. And people love those brands. In fact, I brought few pictures of a few of the doors we have. So with this ordinance, it's really putting a lot of stressing on our business, especially when you spend $3 million to build a gas station these days. By taking this right, it's, it won't pencil out at the end. Especially, there's a map I'd like to provide to you.
It was?
Oh, it was? Yes, there is a map where it has the big star where actually the location is going, five miles either direction. There is other businesses within a mile away from each direction, two miles, mile and a half, that they're all allowed to sell single serve. So I think this is an unfair competition to me, that everyone next to me is allowed to sell, but I cannot cater to the highway travelers or to the city of Victorville that people like to drink their special beers or any of that. And I think I'm being punched, and it really would put a dent to our investment. And, you know, this ordinance might fit, it's, or being looked at from location to location. And this is a very highway location, and you get travels from all over that I really like to cater to those travelers and to the city of Victorville rather than, you know, some of those people live around there to travel far distance to purchases, whether from Rancho or drive to Apple Valley or to Hisperia stores. And I'm one of the largest accounts for the wine companies that service these items. And it's very unique. Our stores are well-known, very clean, very organized, very beautiful, and everything in there is top-notch. So I really like to get a chance and support on this matter. And if you have any questions, please let me know.
Questions from council members?
I have questions from our police department.
And I do too, but not with the applicant. Ms. Carloni, you have any further...
And next, Mr. Tom Stino, project architect.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, councilman. My name's Tom Stino, I'm the architect. The very nature of this ordinance is unconstitutional due to the unfair market conditions it represents and creates with the other stores in the neighborhood that are unrestricted. Right down the street, there's a whole list, I think you have the photographs of all the people that are in both directions, right on 395, just that neighborhood, who are unrestricted, who can sell these items we're speaking of. So that's an unfair advantage. This ordinance, if it is to be applied, should be a case-by-case scenario. Think about this. A liquor store, but not a C-store or fueling station located in an already compromised area of town between a tattoo parlor and a smoke shop. This does not compare to our project. The new, single-user C-store with fueling station on Highway 395 that'll cost over $3 million to build will be invested, maintained, and owned by the Mena brothers. They operate over 20 other stores in the Southern California area. These are experienced operators who have an impeccable track record. I hope you give this issue some consideration. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, council members, on behalf of the applicant, I would like to provide this last bit of information regarding this particular ordinance. First of all, when the ordinance is adopted, it's adopted with respect to the public health, safety, and morals and enhancing the quality of life in the city of Victorville. There is no one more than I who would agree with that premise and who would agree with the laudatory goals that are espoused by the police in wanting to implement regulations and controls to reduce crime and improve quality of life. I want to not repeat, but to refer and incorporate by reference each and every part of my presentation that I made at the planning commission. I know it is in your agenda packet. It is more or less verbatim. It's about two or three pages long of small type, so I will spare you the repetition, but I ask that you reread this because that argument also suggests that your ordinance allows you to look at each location on a case-by-case basis to see if it meets the intense purposes and objectives of your ordinance. What we're looking at here is a highway-oriented business that does not have easy access from residential areas and caters to the highway traveler and not the neighborhood. With that in mind, I reviewed all of the information that was provided by your police department. And I will tell you, in reviewing each and every one of these studies, there was a theme, a common thread that appeared. First of all, all of them are related to the studies of the single man, Robert Nash Parker. He is, has dedicated himself to looking at the relationship between crime and alcohol. He's from UC Riverside. He's done it in the Inland Empire. I will start with comments on the report by, I believe it is Deputy Waterhouse. He gave you a two-page memo in which he referred to other cities in the Inland Empire that had, that had attempted to address the issue of alcohol and crime-related. In the city of San Bernardino, they are talking about implementing a single-serve ordinance, but it is not implemented all by itself alone. Because the city of San Bernardino saw, and it says in the reports that you have that back up the executive summary from the officer, that in order to bring this into compliance and to really meet the objectives of the statute, you have to simultaneously implement ordinances that have existing businesses policed, if you will, and come into compliance. And some of those ordinances that were simultaneously implemented had to do with controlling loitering, controlling panhandling, calls for service at the particular location, all of these things that were, that could cause code enforcement and potential revocation of business licenses and revocations of CUP because they were not meeting the objectives of enhancing, protecting the public, reducing crime, and improving the quality of life in the neighborhood. Now, as you look at the studies that have been produced before you, you see that even Robert Nash Parker talks about the fact that you can either regulate, reduce, or have other enforcement-type provisions that will meet your objectives of improving the neighborhoods and reducing crime. And it is our position that that is what needs to occur first. You have to have these across-the-board enforcement procedures that would cause, or that would give the city the teeth and the power to call an existing business to hearing if it had too many calls for service, if it had too much loitering, if there were too many complaints of panhandling, as well as look at the different avenues by which you might reduce the exposure of alcohol to those individuals who might commit crimes. Now, the studies, the first study by Mr. Parker, which was in, or Professor Parker, that occurred in 2006 focused on juvenile crime and how single-serve alcohol and juveniles showed a correlation that increased crime and homicide among juveniles. It was the 13 to 17 group and then the 18 to 24 group. The second study looked at the relationship between alcohol and crime and looked at transients, loiterers, panhandlers. It looked at neighborhoods. It didn't look at freeway-oriented businesses. So now we're seeing that the conduct that we're trying to deter isn't conduct of the business owner selling, it's conduct of the people who buy. And to put that burden on the business owner seems unfair. To put the burden of following the law on the business owners as far as not allowing loitering, not allowing panhandling, not allowing people hanging out outside of markets, that is fair. But to put the burden of the conduct of those that buy single-serve on the business owner is not fair.
Okay. Are you referring to the studies that is Robert Nash Parker on the impact of retail practices on violence?
There are, within the information provided by the police department, there are two separate studies.
Okay. We have that, we have read that.
Yes, there are multiple articles that refer to those studies.
Right.
Okay. So what is really happening here is we're really looking to tighten up the laws that would, let me rephrase that. What we're really doing here is we're looking at and across-the-board even application of laws that will not only govern new locations, but that will bring old locations in compliance to level the playing field and to allow each business to compete with one another and allow the growth of these particular businesses in the city of Victorville. The city has always been very pro-business. It's been pro-development for sound, responsible business owners. Now, if you look once again, the last issue that was raised in the memo from the officer was the fact that a sting was done, and it was underage sales, and there were seven offending locations that sold to minors. Well, of course, when you have a sting for underage people and you find people who violate, those are owners who are not following the law. That's not because single-serve is available, it's because owners are not following the law. So the issue is, we must bring all the owners in compliance with the law, and the conditions that you can apply on a project are to require that compliance with the law, perhaps require a number of offenses would cause them to come to hearing to defend their CUP or defend their license, something similar to what the Alcoholic Beverage Control Department does. Because if the owners follow the law, they cannot be responsible for the actions of third parties. Now, let me just close by saying, in a CUP, a conditional use permit, it regulates land, it doesn't regulate individuals. Conditions of approval must relate to the property and not to the particular applicant. A condition specifically related to an individual or individual business may be invalid. And I would cite to you Soundhein, S-O-U-N-H-E-I-N, v. City of San Dimas, 1996 case at 47 Cal. Up Fourth, 1181. I would also cite to you County of Imperial versus McDougal, 1997 California Supreme Court case at 19 Cal. 3, 505. A condition that relates solely to the applicant's business for the CUP does not relate to use and zoning of property, and that refers back to Soundhein. So what we're asking by this appeal is that this single-serve not be implemented until equalizing or additional ordinances may be passed that level that playing field, that cause all property owners to comply and do the same thing so that all property owners and business owners may compete. We say that this should not be a condition in a CUP. It should be an ordinance that's evenly applied throughout the city. And we think the city has the ability and may consider itself to have almost the obligation in promoting its morals, public safety, health, and quality of life to look at what kind of conduct is so offensive that it would cause the city to hold an administrative hearing, a review, a new look at not only a new business, but at existing businesses' CUP so that their use is in compliance with the law, and if they violate the law, this may be, that use or that permission may be withdrawn. Now, councilmember mayors, Mr. Mayor, we're not avoiding the law. We have products that are unique. We have products that aren't the typical single-serve $2 can that a panhandler may come in and buy, drink, and litter. That's not what we do. But if we were to employ a single-serve law that does not apply to this business, we would be depriving this business of the ability to conduct business. Cities that have single-serve, cities that want to regulate the businesses that serve single-serve, such as Rancho Cucamonga, such as Redlands, such as Loma Linda, they state themselves that they look at each location on a case-by-case basis. Do our conditions serve the use in that location? We are asking you to do the same thing. Our business is not a neighborhood business, it's a highway-oriented business. We're not near a school. We're away from... We're not near a school, we're away from homes. As a matter of fact, there's a whole shopping center behind us. We're not even oriented to the shopping center. Mind you, it's not yet built, but it will be someday. So our business is not attractive to people walking on the street. People don't walk down Highway 395. I've never seen it. We cater to the motoring public, we cater a high-end product.
Okay.
The single-serve doesn't make sense in this case, and we would ask that we be relieved of it. We're not adverse to restrictions that force us, that police us to follow the law.
Thank you. The information that has been submitted to the City Council, before we debate this or ask questions, I'd like for our police chief to come up. A lot of issues have been raised, and I would like to hear from our law enforcement people who deal with this every day.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council. My name's Sam Lucci, I'm your police chief. Other than getting thirsty looking at these items on display up here, I noticed that they didn't--
I'm sorry, Sam, I'm sorry, I'm going to interrupt you. This has a tendency, we got to the point, and I ask not to be offensive, my apologies, but we started repeating, I don't want to repeat all of this again. I can't get in the position where you give a presentation, we go back, we give a presentation. I got ahead of myself, my apologies, I want to see if there's any more information that's going to be presented by the applicant because I'm going to close this hearing so that we can discuss this and then not enter into debate with the applicant half the night. So if you could make a final argument, please.
I believe in a hearing of this nature, Mr. Mayor, that after the balance of the public speakers, the applicant has a chance to close, and I would defer to Mr. City Attorney if that's a correct statement.
It would be appropriate to listen to staff's testimony and give the applicant the opportunity to rebut the provisions.
All right. But not to make a presentation all over again, but rebut any of the additional testimony from staff? Is that what you're saying?
Basically, they can certainly rebut and question some of the issues raised by staff.
All right. Sam, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Not sure what it is you expect from me at this point.
Well, I know I have questions, and we've, two councilmembers have indicated they have questions. If you want to go ahead and make a presentation, we have some questions for it.
Just real briefly, and then I'll refer your questions to the right person. But I don't know about you, but there may be neighborhoods not quite accessible to this location right now, but in the future, I think that will change. Number one. Number two, if the single-serve, from what I heard, if what I heard is correct, if they're marketing this toward the highway traveler, I have a concern over that as well. I don't know that you'll ask us for any additional information other than what you have in the packets that you were provided, but we're open for questions, and I think we'll be able to answer any questions you may have of us.
All right. Start on my right. Mr. Kennedy, you have any questions for our police department? Or comments?
No, I don't think so.
Okay.
Tell me briefly why you're recommending no single-serve.
Absolutely. And in fact, I'm going to turn it over to Deputy Brian Waterhouse. That's the person standing behind me. He's the one that authored that two-page memo that the attorney referred to.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, the reason we're recommending it, there are several crimes that correlate with the single-serve. Panhandling, drunken public, the mere nature of the way they're sold, some of them are 24, 25-ounce cans. Nobody opens up a 24, 25-ounce can of beer that's served cold, ready to consume, drinks 12 ounces of it, which is a serving, and then says, "I'm going to save the rest for later." It enables overdrinking, it enables public intoxication and the other crimes. It has a direct impact on crime, public safety. We do inspections on a regular basis to all of our businesses that have licenses. When we go there, we find open containers everywhere, in the parking lot. There is no legal justification for that, other than that the people are purchasing the items, coming out to the parking lot, consuming the items, discarding it. In some cases, we have found these containers on the lines that are striped in the parking lot, which probably means they're getting into their vehicle, consuming it, and tossing it out the window. Public safety, so now they're driving off, okay? And not to mention the image it has for our city. We believe that the ordinance that was passed, it's an investment in the future of Victorville. The more and more businesses that come, if we still have the single-serve, there's going to be more and more calls. It's going to drain public law enforcement resources. That's why we stand by the ordinance, and we ask that you do the same.
Mr. McCaffrey?
Yeah, and actually, this might be a question for Chris Borchardt. Since the passage of this ordinance, how many CUPs or approximately how many CUPs for similar types of businesses have we issued where we prohibited single-serve sale?
This actually started as a policy, you might remember, through the Planning Commission, where we were conditioning projects on a case-by-case basis for it. And then it wasn't until we amended the code and adopted that in in July, that actually became final in July of 2013. So that's only been seven, eight months since the ordinance was in effect, but we were conditioning projects. I'll look at Scott to see if you have an estimate on the number of businesses. Twelve, twelve projects.
All right. We're getting ready to see a Circle K, I believe, 76.
Item number three.
Well--
Oh, you mean--
Right here--
Oh, the new gas station.
Yeah, the new gas station, refurbished gas station, whatever we want to call it. Are they going to have the ability to sell? Do you know?
I believe they would be conditioned, they were conditioned as well.
So, but they couldn't sell single-serve, but they'd have the ability to sell a six-pack of beer?
Right.
Okay. All right. And that's nowhere near residential, it's on a major thoroughfare through the city?
Right.
Okay. And then, interesting point that was brought up during the presentation by the applicant's representative was that somehow we could apply this to all property owners, and I defer our city attorney, with respect to existing uses that happened to come before any ordinance was passed, there's no real ability for us to go back and say, "Well, you can't sell that now unless, for some reason, they're violating the law and they get their license revoked."
That is correct. They would be essentially grandfathered in. This is a prior ordinance now, these are conditions that you now impose upon requests for new development and new development approvals.
Okay. That's all I have.
Councilmember Christian, you have any questions? I have a question. What was the significance of this, not single-serve? I don't want a long explanation, but I don't understand why we got this.
Yes, Mayor, I took this photo yesterday. I'd just like to say, I own stores from Southern, Central Coast, Northern California. This ordinance I've never seen, actually, in any of the counties or the cities. This is the first time I hear of this. I brought this picture, this is miniatures, they call them shooters, they call them, and those shooters, you have a picture, there's, you know, items in there, that a miniature is a $10 miniature. So I don't understand, this is spirits, they're not allowing me to sell in this ordinance, including--
There's all of these real small bottles, that's-- Okay, these are all small bottles, that's, that was, okay, thank you. That's all I have. Okay?
I want to bring up on the issue the officer hasn't mentioned regarding, he's seen, this is all depends on the owner, the operator, how clean he keeps his store, runs his business. And I'm one of the people, for sure, my business speak for itself, how clean, how organized, and how we keep things. Not only that, in this ordinance, what I understand, you can't sell a 24-ounce can. But you know what? On the other hand, you can get a tape and wrap two of them, and now you can sell them for $3.99. What did we accomplish? Another thing is, on the other hand, you can't, I can't, you know, customers will not come and shop at my stores, but they can just go half a mile away from me to the Arco, to the State of Brothers, to the Shell, and purchase their beer there. It's just, all it's doing, it's putting a dent to us who's coming to Victorville to invest and put $3 million in our projects.
Mr. Mayor, I've got a question, Sam, or the officers that worked on this project. Do you know if there has been any study done on alcohol-related crime that was related to single-service units versus six-packs or stuff consumed at home, or anything else?
When I spoke to the other agencies, and we talked to different people, I only listed a few in here, that we did a couple from local, San Bernardino, Rancho Cucamonga, and Ontario. And we also, my partner contacted Juliet Police Department in Illinois. They did not have any statistical data that they could tell us about, because it was, nothing was being, is being tracked at the time, is what we were told by all the departments. They said that, they basically told us, it's, their ordinances were passed roughly in 2008, and it's just too soon for that kind of statistical data to come forth because it's not being tracked. What they did tell us is, they are seeing a noticeable difference at the businesses that are governed by the single-serve ordinance. They have less calls for service for panhandling, they have less calls for service for drunken public, open containers, those type of crimes.
It's anecdotal, it's not, we don't have, don't have a study, we just have-- All right, Sam?
It's extremely intensive because it's so transitory. You know, they pull in, they obtain single-serve, if they do consume it there, they don't stay there. And if they leave and a crime's committed, it's difficult to tie that back to the single-serve. It's just incredibly intensive, it's hard to track.
You see a drunk, an accident, a five-car collision on the freeway--
Absolutely.
Alcohol-related, who knows?
Who knows if he bought it five miles back on the road or not? Correct.
I think that's what's causing me some difficulty in seeing this, such a sharp connection between single-serve and crime. I'm sure it contributes, I'm sure all alcohol purchasing and consumption contributes. But it's not the purchasing and alcohol, it's the abusive behavior by the person who consumes it. I don't want to go to car dealers and say, "You can't sell a car that goes over 100 miles an hour because too many people die from driving fast cars." I'm a little concerned about that. Okay? And I have to say, Ms. Carloni makes a compelling argument about the difference in the way we're treating businesses with this one ordinance. And I mean, that can have a significant effect on the business when the real problem is outside the door and it's the monitoring of that location. And I mean, I'm hearing an important argument here. Okay. Before we enter into the debate here on the--
We're not discussing it, I'm sorry.
I'm going to ask Ms. Carloni to make her final comments.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. In closing, I want to emphasize that even the police department representatives have said that there are no real statistics, they can't really correlate it. And that's why it's so important to not look at a blanket-across-the-board ordinance, but to look at each location on a case-by-case basis. Even when they said, "Oh, we found litter, we found loitering, we found cans thrown," they gave you no locations. They didn't tell us where this happened. They didn't tell us the characteristics of the neighborhood. They didn't tell us the factors of the surrounding neighborhood. What we know at this location is that it's a highway, and there's four corners, there's across the highway, there's block walls and no entrance. Behind the business, there is a large lot for a major commercial shopping center and 600 feet to another exit out of a housing tract. Cat a corner, it's 1,200 feet before anyone can walk out of a neighborhood. What we know about this business is it's not yet developed. So we can't say there'll be panhandlers there, we can't say there'll be loiterers there, we can't say that there will be a problem at this location. So implementation of this ordinance has no nexus to this location at the present time. What we can say is the city of Victorville appropriately implemented a policy on a case-by-case basis. And I think your ordinance, that is into your development code, suggests that that's the appropriate method to proceed and follow. Because the general provision says, this is a starting point, the hearing body can modify the rules. And then you go down to a suggestion of no single-serve, but you can modify it on a case-by-case basis. The hearing body can make a variation or an exception or regulate it somehow differently. And I would only then close by adding, Rancho Cucamonga sent us an email. They do theirs on a case-by-case basis, it's not blanket-across-the-board. Both in Joliet and San Bernardino, they have accompanying statutes that try to bring everyone into compliance with the laws on loitering and littering and promoting the health, safety, and welfare of the neighborhood. And in this case, we have a business that doesn't have a neighborhood, that's not been tested, that doesn't have a problem, and it's being given a strict limitation. Aren't we in the business of doing the least amount necessary to allow our businesses to thrive?
Thank you.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Go ahead, I'll wrap up, please.
Actually, the studies I had to follow and kind of go further into checking in other cities, I contacted Rancho Cucamonga. They do not have this ordinance at all. They look into things case-by-case, and it has to be closed by a church or a school, which were totally separate. We contacted Fontana as well, same situation, Redlands as well. There is none of those are this ordinance in any of those three cities that were called. Just wanted to make that clear. Thank you.
Any questions from councilmembers? So no questions? I'm going to close this hearing. Councilmembers? I've got a question for staff. Is it possible to have an ordinance that allows us to force, say, an offending retailer to impose this no-single-sell service on them as long as they are an offending retailer? I mean, is that something we could do?
Yes, actually, when, I actually went on the ride-along with the mayor, because I was curious myself. One of the things that the deputies discussed with us was, for those businesses who have offended, in this, in the latest inspection, it happened to be youth who was able to buy alcohol, don't know if it was single-serve or not, but ultimately, that opens up the ability to negotiate that into their condition of approval. So that's exactly what they're looking at doing. I was under the impression that San Bernardino had passed an ordinance that applied this type of an ordinance to all businesses, including existing businesses. And my understanding is that they did, but it was deemed unconstitutional based on the existing businesses, but it was something that could be applied to any businesses, new businesses that come to town. Some of the other issues that were brought up, since you asked about that, actually, we intend to discuss with the council. One of the items later talks about our strategic planning, and we've got a series of meetings set up on the second and fourth, and in April's case, fifth, Tuesdays of the month. In fact, three weeks from tonight, we'll be talking about proactive enforcement by our police department, by our sheriff's deputies, and talking about businesses that serve alcohol, whether they're liquor stores, markets, bars, restaurants, and having a discussion with the council about the potential to perhaps reduce the number of calls for service, that your deputies are spending more time on proactive enforcement, which is where the real impact to crime can happen, when they're not going from call to call because of some business use, when they're actually out there trying to prevent crime. So some of the ordinances that Ms. Carloni brought up are certainly worth looking at, something we intend to discuss with the council in about three weeks.
I guess my concerns are, is that we have our police chief coming up here telling us that, you know, it generates more calls. I mean, I've seen, I could tell which liquor stores are selling single- I mean, I've seen, I could tell which liquor stores are selling single serves because it's a mess, you have bums coming around, it's not a safe place to be. For people going into those areas and being customers or for the businesses around. So we have a lot of crime and I'm not really sure how another liquor store is going to help Victorville. And I just don't, I don't get it. So to me, it's pretty clear that when we have our police chief telling us that we're going to generate more calls, we're going to have more problems, you know, I think, I think the council needs to listen, especially when we're, when we're struggling with law enforcement and trying to keep up with the crime that's occurring in Victorville.
Other questions, comments from councilmembers?
Yeah, I do. I would tend to agree with Ms. Vias. I think that, you know, there's a reason that there was a policy established by the Planning Commission back however long ago it was, I think when, when I was on the Planning Commission. And ultimately, it became an ordinance that this council adopted. And the reality is, is that, you know, our wonderful state of California passes laws all the time that, you know, as new businesses come in, they have to comply with. You know, as an example, the residential building industry has to now put fire sprinklers into homes. That's not something that the city can arbitrarily say you can't do. And so the thought that, you know, as new businesses come in, they ought not have to comply with whatever the new law is on the street at that time and place, where those that came before that new business do not have to, does not carry any weight with me because that's the nature of when you come in and decide to operate your business. I would imagine even the applicant has had to comply with laws or has not had to comply with laws at his other locations that are now in effect within the state or municipalities in which he operates. But I also look to the Planning Commission having come from there, and this was a 4-0 decision. You know, I find no fault in, in what they did there and their decision-making process. I support their decision.
At this point in time, if there are no other further comments by the city council, you have an appeal in regard to the Planning Commission's decision?
Well, there are more comments.
Okay, I'm sorry, go right ahead.
A couple of years ago, BAF brought us a proposal that we should impose a fee on all rental properties, all rental properties, because there was a perceived concern about some bad tenants in some neighborhoods. We had that discussion. And my opinion at that time was that rather than taxing all owners of rental properties, I happen to be one, because of a few bad owners and a few bad tenants, what we should address are the problem hoses, the problem tenants. We shouldn't try to create a blanket punishment, if you will, on all landlords. Well, we've done something like that here. We've created this ordinance, but it doesn't apply to everybody. And in particular, it does not apply to the offending parties today. What we're doing is we're punishing the new developments coming in who have no bad track record because of the bad performance of existing retailers. Now that, I'm sorry, I'm having to rethink this whole concept. It just, it doesn't make sense to me. It just doesn't. We need to, we need to address the problem cases for being the problems that they are. It makes no sense to punish brand-new people with no history of problems for the, for the behavior of, and the performance of existing businesses. I just, I, that needs, I need to say that. It's got to make sense, people. New law or not, I mean, if it's a bad law, we shouldn't have it. I'm sorry.
I think for me, it's about making Victorville safer. And again, a liquor store, I don't see how that's healthy for the community. And if it's generating more police calls, we need to address that. And we are going to, you said in our strategic plan, start addressing enforcement. So we are going to crack down on those businesses that are offending as well. But we can't continue to go in the same direction that we've been. We have to make a better Victorville, that's how I feel about it.
If I might, Mayor Cox, to address Mr. Kennedy's point, there is actually flexibility in the ordinance as written right now to modify the requirements. However, the standards that are set forth are minimum standards. So you have previously adopted this ordinance and codified it based on the prior public hearings before the Planning Commission and the council, and you have established minimum standards. You do have the ability to modify it. I would argue that the modifications, though, would be on a case-by-case basis and would be at something above the minimum thresholds.
But if I understand correctly, the ordinance as it stands today, as any new development, it's just prohibited?
Yes, with respect to these minimums.
Councilmembers, any questions of staff? Any further comments? No, I'm sorry, this hearing is closed. I think we have considered everything in the world. You repeated yourself several times to the point that I've given you every opportunity. I don't know what else you could add, except to talk us out of this.
A new issue was raised as to modification. We would propose a modification if the council would be amenable.
Attorney.
Certainly, but again, the ordinance as written right now establishes these as minimum thresholds. If there's a modification, I'd see no harm in listening to the modification as in what you can do.
But wouldn't it be appropriate if there's a modification to refer it back to the Planning Commission?
It would if, depending on the modification, if you want to consider it, yes. I don't know what the modification proposal is.
Well, while the hearing has probably been closed and we've given almost an hour to this, if there is a proposal that makes sense, this council is going to listen to it. I think you are aware that we've considered almost everything we can consider. If you have a proposal that's going to be rather short, because we're not going to start the debate all over again, go ahead.
Well, it's, on, on the beers, I've seen, like in Palmdale, I own a store in Palmdale, Lancaster area, and they have put a condition not to sell 12-ounce single-serve or 16-ounce, anything under, from 16 and under, not to sell. And that's something I was okay with. And regardless whether they put that or not, I do not sell those items in my store as somebody to break a six-pack from this. But there's about 400 different kinds I carry that it comes single like this, but not the cheap, as Officer has mentioned earlier, that it's a $2 can or $1.50 a can, I don't carry that stuff.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I think what the attorney was saying was that the ordinance, as interpreted by the city attorney, says that these are the minimum standards, meaning you could be more harsh than what the ordinance currently says, but you could not be more lax.
I agree.
Well, is that, is that to the extent of the proposal that you're going to make?
I'm sorry?
Is that the extent, is that what you're, what exactly is the proposal here?
Well, I, go ahead.
The proposal is half pint, half pint and greater allowed to be sold, 24-ounce and greater allowed to be sold. I find it hard to suggest you can't, I mean, you have an ordinance that says zero, and if you have the ability to modify zero, you can't modify zero, you can only modify zero up. So 24 and greater and half pints and greater in spirits, that would be the proposal.
Legal question to the attorney, thank you very much. Legal question to the attorney.
I believe that would be below the threshold set forth in your ordinance. So if you were going to do that, I would think you'd have to revisit the ordinance and send it back to the Planning Commission.
Okay, so the city council has the option in front of you to revisit, refer it back to the Planning Commission, or approve or deny?
I go to approve or deny.
Comments?
I agree, I'm ready to make a motion.
The chair's ready for a motion?
The motion is to?
The motion is to, this is an appeal from the Planning Commission. So if you agree, Mr. Attorney, since we have a, do we have a proposed resolution, would you explain that the yes votes are no, or no votes are yes?
Correct. The resolution before you that you would consider is Resolution Number 14009, denying the appeal, thereby prohibiting the sale of single-serve alcoholic beverages in conjunction with Planning Commission Resolution 13042, which granted a conditional use permit.
So my yes vote means they, they cannot single-serve?
That is correct.
Well, the motion would be to approve that, Resolution Number?
Be in favor of the resolution, you would be approving the resolution denying the appeal.
Motion by Councilmember Vias, second by Mayor Protem McEckern. Motion carries with Councilmember Kennedy voting no.
Next agenda item, whose next agenda item is appeal hearing, it's agenda item number three. Says a appeal circle case stores letter requesting street improvement waiver, Mojave Drive Moratorium, on and on and on. There's five items here, four items, the site plan, a conditional use permit for beer and wine, a tentative parcel map, variance to allow single-serve. This is, and then I understand there may be a request to withdraw one of the appeals. Mr. Robertson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I think we need a brief staff presentation. This one, if possible, is actually slightly more complicated than the last two because it's three appeals sort of wrapped up into one, as Mr. Porture is getting his papers together there.
And I hope staff explains to us why this one has a variance to allow the sale of single-serve.
That option was available under the last one, but the motion that was made was to deny it.
No, but the Planning Commission approved it.
What's that, the, the variance?
The entire plan and the variance.
No, they did not actually.
That was my understanding, that they denied that request.
Yes.
If I might, point a clarification.
Thank you, Mr. Porture.
You do have a request here, again, from Attorney Briggs to withdraw his appeal with conditions. However, I don't think that's legally available to you because if you withdraw the appeal, there is no longer an appeal. And the applicant in this case did not file an independent appeal. Again, I would interpret Mr. Briggs's request as a request to, subsequent to whatever decision you make, not continue to challenge the project if you agree to the condition he's proposing, which again goes to the issue of the project agreeing to abide by a solar electricity generation facility.
How many of these conditions did Mr. Briggs appeal? I mean, on this particular project?
Mr. Briggs only appealed the issue of the environmental condition going to the solar electric generation issue. However, if his appeal is still before this council, then the applicant has the ability essentially to piggyback on that appeal. You have the ability in considering that appeal to consider all kinds of new information and make whatever decisions you like.
Okay, this is very confusing, trying to read through this because we have an appeal from the applicant, which beyond the time for them to file an appeal, but because, because there was an appellate that allows them to also raise questions that they were too late in raising initially, is that right?
That is correct. The only appellant here is Mr. Briggs on this item, who, who filed his appeal in a timely manner. He is requesting a withdrawal with conditions. You can't really do a withdrawal with conditions, you either withdraw it entirely or you consider the appeal. If you consider the appeal, then the applicant obviously can provide whatever information they require and you have the ability to make whatever decision you decide is appropriate and in place whatever conditions you would like to on the project.
Well, so the record will be clear, if it's possible, this is very confusing. The applicant did not appeal in a timely manner the widening and improving of the roadway of the dedication, but were able to raise the issue because Mr. Briggs appealed.
That is correct, that is correct. When you have an appeal hearing as a city council, you can consider all information, including information provided by the applicant. You also have the ability to modify Planning Commission's decisions and impose whatever conditions you like in terms and in connection with the approval of the project.
Who appealed the single-serve?
I'm not sure.
The applicant, Circle K.
They did, that was timely.
They brought it up at the hearing before you.
They did, they brought it up, and so they did, they are the appellate on the single-serve.
Correct.
Planning Commission denied that and that's under appeal.
Correct.
Wait, wait, wait.
Based, based on they spoke?
I'm reading paragraph B, and it says, "The appeal case included a permit to construct a store, a conditional use permit to allow for the sale of beer and wine within 300 feet of a residence, a tentative parcel map, and a variance to allow for the sale of single-serve alcohol." Now that's what the Planning Commission appealed, approved, and this is what the appellate, the appellate is appealing.
The Planning Commission denied the variance portion for single-serve. They approved the rest of the project.
Why isn't that?
Because it's under appeal. So the whole project is before you again. You can, you can, like Andre just explained, you can overturn?
Planning Commission did not approve that piece. Don't you think that would have been useful information to give us?
It's in the staff report, written that way. What they are appealing is the Planning Commission action, which is before you. The Planning Commission adopted a resolution and as part of that resolution denied the portion requiring the single-serve.
All right, I think that it would be very simple if we divided these and handled them separately, but we can't. It's one application, it was one item before the Planning Commission, we have three players involved, so they have to be handled at the same time, which adds to the confusion. But, Mr. Porture, if you'll make the staff presentation, we'll try to get through this.
Sure, and I think it can be done somewhat simply. The memo, you did have an additional memo put before you tonight, it is very similar to the item A1, as Andre referred to, where you, you need to add the condition of approval to satisfy the Corey Briggs appeal. The appellate and the applicant have agreed to that condition, that there is a resolution for you to do that. Assuming that the alcohol, single-serve sales will go the same as it did on the previous item, there's not much discussion needed on that. Therefore, the only part of the appeal that you're talking about then is the waiving of the suspension or the waiving or suspension of the street improvements on Mojave Drive. The project, again, is a gas station, convenience store, and car wash on Mojave Drive near the intersection of Interstate 15. So at the last meeting, there was concerns about the widening of Mojave being able to be done. Brian Engler has a diagram for that, he can go over that with, for the council if you'd like. And in terms of the, in terms of that, the widening overall, the Planning Commission has a policy on new projects, and all new construction is supposed to be required to improve all, all improvements, to the maximum what is required by the general plan. They recommended suspending the improvements. However, the applicant wasn't happy with the suspension and asked the council for a waiver. To waive it would be going against the general plan, and that's when we mentioned at the last hearing that waiving that would then be making Corey Briggs's argument that the project is not consistent with the general plan. That's what we were referring to. The general plan decides the streets, based on all the zoning in the surrounding area, what traffic is going to be generated, what is going to be put on those streets, the width and how many lanes each of those streets needs to be. The general plan right now has that set, so to not allow them, allow them not to have to do that would be inconsistent with the general plan. So with that, hopefully that's as simple as we can put it. If you have any questions?
It's a complicated issue, I understand, I understand it. Thank you for the clarification. Any questions of staff before I open the hearing?
I just, if I could have our city attorney explain to us once again, the appellate is Briggs Law Court.
That is correct.
On behalf of Creed 21.
Correct.
Understanding that it's an appeal hearing, we have to take any and all testimony, including from the applicant, the appellate, or anybody else that wishes to testify.
That is correct.
But the appeal before us is from Briggs Law and specifically addresses not being in compliance with our general plan with respect to the solar. Am I correct?
You are correct. He originally appealed based only on the solar issue. And you opened that hearing at the last council meeting, and during that discussion, the applicant then has the ability to raise issues with respect to the Planning Commission prior approvals and seek council direction, which you now have the authority in an appeal hearing to modify what the Planning Commission did. So you can address the Planning Commission conditions as they relate to the right-of-way issues, as they relate to the single-serve alcohol, and as they relate to the solar because of the fact that it's in an appeal hearing. What now has confused the matter is the request from Mr. Briggs to withdraw his appeal, quote, "with a condition." Can't do that. You either withdraw the appeal, and that way you cannot impose the condition that he is seeking, which he says is, quote, "condition." Can't do that. You either withdraw the appeal and that way you cannot impose the condition that he is seeking, which he says is, quote, "conditional," i.e. his, his withdrawal is conditioned on you imposing that condition. The only way you can impose that condition is to continue with the appeal hearing.
Okay, but I think there needs to be clarification because the way the agenda reads, it, it's as if, if we decide on the various different issues, we're either granting the appeal or denying the appeal with respect to those other issues and we are not. The, is the council not in the position, as much as we are able to address those issues beyond the planning commission has or has not, also able to do nothing? And just go along with what the planning commission has already approved with the exception of what is related to the Briggs Law Corp appeal. The actual appeal that is before us, the only appeal that is before us.
That you have flexibility based on the fact this is an appeal hearing to do whatever you like with respect to what the planning commission decided. You can do nothing. You can modify their approval with respect to one or two or three issues.
Okay, because I wanted to make sure that the council was clear that with respect to these other issues, we don't have to do anything. There was no appeal filed with respect to those issues. The only appeal that was filed was by Briggs Law Corp and, forgive me, I can't believe I'm making their argument, with respect to the general plan and the generation of electricity on site.
That is correct. You need not do anything. However, the applicant, because the appeal is pending, has the ability to provide any evidence they like in connection with the appeal hearing and request that you make changes to the planning commission recommendations. You don't have to do anything.
As does anybody in the audience.
Absolutely.
The applicant is just requesting, that's not an appeal.
Exactly. They are requesting modifications to the planning commission's approvals.
If I, if I could just point out that the staff recommendation was actually hoping that you would modify the planning commission recommendation in terms of not even suspending the improvements and making them do the improvements at this time. That's the policy for all new construction and it would be difficult to, it was within their realm to do that, understand, but it does create a difficult situation in order to go and get those improvements in the future when the city decides or in the, at the time that they're needed in the future. It is difficult with just a suspension to go hit a business owner 10, 15, 20, 30 years down the road and say, now's the time, you know, you need to put up $300,000 or whatever it's going to cost to widen the street, so.
Question. What is the, we're looking at what, a 100-foot section of street there and more or less?
I think it's more than that.
Is it?
Yeah.
150? Not 500?
Uh, it's approximate.
So we're talking about, we're talking about tearing out curbs, gutters, sidewalks, and moving them, what, 13, 15, 20 feet?
Yeah, Brian, Brian would be better to address the details.
And then paving that lane.
Sure.
Does anybody have a rough idea, a rough estimate of what it would cost us to replace the curbs, gutters, sidewalk, and the paving?
Engineering would be the more.
Not talking about acquiring the land, I'm just talking about the.
Understand.
The improvements.
Thank you. The frontage is, as I recall, the frontage, as I recall, is somewhere in the order of 300 feet. And I did a very rough cost estimate. It's not based on any plans because we haven't had detailed plans submitted. My rough estimate would be somewhere in the order of $200,000.
Yes.
That's what it would cost the city with prevailing wages. It may cost a developer less. That's a rough cost.
Does not include the cost of the land itself?
That does not include the cost of the land.
Any other questions of staff before I open the hearing? No further questions? Oh, I'm sorry, do you have questions? No, okay. At this time, I'm going to open the hearing on this item. I don't know who's going to speak. Cards do I have? This is A3 and I have one, two cards. Rona Daruff, I'm sorry, that may not be correct, and Alex Crevis. Okay, if you would either want to both come with the microphone and go ahead and make your presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, councilmembers and staff. You know, it feels like deja vu, it was just here 30 days ago and, you know, I appreciate you guys taking the time out to hear our requests. And as it pertains to the appeal from Creed 21 and Corey Briggs, we did agree and come to an agreement with the solar. So we would like to add that as a condition to our project. Just to reiterate, it's a 4,500-square-foot convenience store, neighborhood market with a fresh food program. We have a car wash, which is where the solar panels will actually be, and eight fueling stations. And I wanted to also request the waiver, which is what we're here to discuss, of the off-site improvements from our last meeting on March 4th, which is what I brought up and presented to you, so I want to keep it brief. But kind of point out two important facts that are very important to Circle K. The two concerns, the first is the economics of the project. You know, the site alone will cost us $3 million to build. This does not include the cost of the land. This investment into the community is significant and it'll truly revitalize this area and hopefully lead the way for future growth. Just as a reminder, our Palmdale Road store generated $371,000 in 2013 in sales tax revenue. So this could just be an additional bonus for the city with this new store. The proposed site itself, as you know, is not perfect. We have to build a bridge over the drainage channel. That's an added cost to our development other projects don't see. As you know, we also, as I mentioned, the, the agreement with Creed 21, so now we have to add the solar, but we do see that as a benefit down the line environmentally and it makes sense for us economically. So for us to complete the offsites now add an additional cost to our bottom line. And as it stands today, the project doesn't pencil if we were required to do the offsites. So, as you know, as in every business, every project is getting questioned. You know, does the investment make sense? Can we afford it? And that's where I am today and that's why I'm here speaking with you. This site is not part of a four-way intersection. It is not main and first and therefore the traffic impact greatly affects our sales projections and what we think we can achieve at the site, along with the single sales restriction. That hurts us as well. So, you know, we're here as well requesting that the single sales ordinance be removed. This, this greatly affects our projections. So we have offsites, the, you know, the widening, you know, it's not a main and first. These, these are all going to impact our bottom line. The second is safety. This is, this is big for management, for Circle K, for myself. You know, I'm going to build a site and it's less than half a block between Condor and Village. We believe that the widening and addition of a lane will cause a traffic hazard. There's a poster board that I have up here. It shows cars maneuvering their way back through the lane, to the through lane after they cross Village, realizing that if they don't, they will hit the curb. This widening of only half a block will create confusion for drivers and it's a very serious traffic concern for us. Making that lane dedicated right turn into Village doesn't make sense. Village deadens into the mobile home park and there's not a lot of traffic that, that goes through there. Our proposed driveway where cars will enter and exit our site off Mojave is right where that extra lane is going to begin. It serves no purpose whatsoever. It will only create more confusion for drivers exiting our site. And our customers are going to have to switch lanes at the last minute and there's another hazard. I just don't understand the staff's position on how this additional lane will not cause any safety concerns. At Circle K, we take safety very seriously. We partner with local law enforcement to ensure our sites are run according to standard. Additionally, we have strict store policies and procedures that each and every store employee must adhere to and I have a handout that lists some of those policies and how we partner with law enforcement. You know, we have another store here in Victorville and we pass all of our tests are every other month, secret shoppers, making sure we're not selling to underage kids. You know, we're responsible retailers and, you know, we want to build, we want to be part of that growth, so I, I hope you understand what my appeal is today. It's now come to safety and economics and I want to see this project succeed, so I hope that you see that I need your support in making this project a success. Thank you. And I have Alex, my architect, here as well, if there's any questions specific to the widening as well.
Are you Alex Service? Is it you, Alex? Please try not to repeat.
No, my comment is going to be related to the cost estimate that was given to you on the dedication. It was mentioned about $200,000. Just the street lights alone and the traffic signal is going to be about $60,000 to $80,000. If we do the relocation of the curb and gutter, also there is a storm drain there that we're going to have to relocate. So we estimated this to be about 300 to 350 and not giving the, also taking under consideration the price of the land.
Thank you. Anna Carloni, I did notice that you had a card on this item. Did you want to speak? Okay. Come forward, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I rise again to speak to the single serve. Once again, I would simply reiterate a conditional use permit regulates land, not individuals. Conditions of approval must relate to the property, not to the particular applicant. A condition must be related to the use. One that relates solely to the services or the business of the applicant does not relate to the use and zoning of property. I cited Case Law Sanheim versus City of San Dimas and County of Imperial versus McDougal. I make the record on behalf of Circle K in this respect. I would add that our research shows City of Redlands has no municipal code prohibiting sale of single serve, but their planning commission is looking at a code. They're looking at it on a case-by-case basis. The City of Fontana looks at each situation on a case-by-case basis. They have restrictions for stores in sensitive areas, close to church, school, and homes. The City of Loma Linda has no sales of any alcohol unless a facility is larger than 15,000 square feet. And lastly, Rancho Cucamonga, that's reflected in the Waterhouse Report, looks at items on a case-by-case basis. You cannot legislate the conduct of individuals. You cannot put the burden on the property owner to control what individual people do. As long as the property owner follows the law, follows his license restrictions, he should be entitled to do his business. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other individual to speak on this item? If not, I'm going to close the hearing. Council members?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, if staff could request just a brief follow-up on some of the items that were raised. Obviously, the issue of solar is already resolved between the parties. We don't want to speak to that. The issue of single serve, I'm assuming you don't want the same presentation you heard 20 minutes ago, so that would stand. But I would like our city engineer, Brian Engler, to come up. He's also a registered traffic engineer, to talk about, should the council impose the requirement to pave that lane, to put that lane in, which is different than what the planning commission did? What would that look like from a traffic engineering standpoint? What are the options that are available? The applicant stated a concern about vehicles traveling across the, that intersection, which is not something that I think the traffic engineer would allow for. So Brian, if you could come up and just briefly talk about what that lane might look like in the event the council chooses to go ahead and impose that requirement, which is the staff recommendation.
I'm sorry, the staff recommendation is to widen and improve?
Yes, staff recommendation is to widen and improve.
And to widen it now, not at some future time?
The planning commission opted to suspend it, meaning we would be able to go back to that property owner at any time as we deem it necessary to widen and improve. And that sets up a potentially very sticky situation if we are improving the entire roadway of Mojave. That's why the policy is to do the improvements.
In the interest of time, I, I don't know if anyone else thinks that we want, that we might never widen Mojave. I raised that issue last time. I'm absolutely convinced that the day will come when we will widen Mojave. If that's the case, we don't need to be convinced that the day will come that we will widen Mojave.
Right.
Is that okay?
We do have, if you would like to see it, we've got an 11-foot.
Yeah, I, no, and I appreciate that, Brian.
Version of Mojave Drive.
Go around I did with you. Sean took me to the woodshed and happy to look at the drawing, but. Want to widen Mojave?
Someday we will widen Mojave, yes. The question is, are we going to require this applicant to widen it now? And I'd like, I'd like you to hear from your civil, your city engineer on whether or not it can be done in a safe manner.
It is feasible to widen Mojave. Some widening will affect some of the properties. However, we will not need to remove any parking spaces. We won't need to relocate any businesses. We won't need to relocate any homes. It will fit. We've already looked at that and if anyone wants to review a plan sometime, we have one. We could show it to you. It's a preliminary layout.
Since you've done it, I would like to look at it, but we don't need to do that tonight.
Anytime.
Are you talking about the adjoining properties that are already, that are already developed?
Yes, as an example, immediately to the west where Molly's is, there's a shopping center on the other side of the street. The curb width, curb-to-curb is 64 feet today. It could be widened eight and a half feet on each side without losing existing parking. It will fit. It looks like a tight squeeze if you look at it casually, but if you go out there and measure it, it will fit.
If you widened the southerly side of Mojave Drive at the current time and you're traveling eastward toward the freeway on Mojave, how do you get out of the right lane and not run into the curb across the street with existing service stations?
Okay. If I could have the camera zoom in on the plan that's on the table, if we could do that. In the meantime, I'll, can you hear me okay?
It's on our screens up here. There it is.
I think I'm going to turn this over to avoid confusion. Okay, so the property is, subject property is here. It's currently vacant. What we've done here is we've shown a view of what it could look like in the interim condition before all of Mojave Drive is widened. If you were to widen only this additional lane, it would have a turn, a right turn into the South Lake Village Drive. What is not shown here and what's typically done is there would be a couple merge arrows in here. And you'll see this. This is very typical. You'll see this all over the place. We have situations like this in the City of Victorville and you'll see it in other cities too, in my opinion. This would actually enhance the safety. It would, it would provide more width for the ingress and egress in, in and out of the site. And the through traffic would continue through as it always does. It would only be the traffic that would be the ingress or egress or people making a right turn onto the South Lake Village Drive that would use that lane. So I, in my opinion, it would actually enhance the safety. It wouldn't be a dangerous situation at all.
If you will place your finger right at the corner of Mojave Drive and Village Drive there, there's a drainage channel. It goes back in a southwesterly direction. And I believe the applicant indicated that they had to build a bridge across that channel?
Yes, their, their site plan showed another area, a phase two area for development.
But it doesn't exit on, on Village?
They would have a driveway that would actually access on this Village, the South Lake Village, but there would be a connection from both areas of the side across the wash.
Because of this kind of construction, would it be restricted to right turn in, right turn out? On the plan that you show here?
We did not. I don't believe we made that restriction in the conditions of approval. I don't recall. I'd have to go back and review it.
Okay, well, I think the condition of approval was to widen and improve, but it would be the engineers making the determination for the traffic safety purposes on what the.
There was a, there was, on the site plan, there was a driveway shown here. The other driveway into the site, as I recall, was off Village and then there was a connection across.
Brian, what do you think is the chance that people will move into that right lane thinking it is going to give them access to the freeway on Rim? Because they're going to get fooled if they do then.
I don't think there's a significant chance with proper signing and striping. I've seen situations like this in many locations.
Is this the same as what we have on a Bear Valley Road approaching Amerigosa? Right off the freeway? Where it's right turn only in that right lane against the curb?
Yes.
Same.
There is a right turn lane that's similar to that. There are more lanes there, but it's similar.
Brian, also, I'm curious, and this may go to Mr. Portcher or you or both. Minus the appeal, what would you have done with respect to this particular decision that was made by the planning commission? Would you have appealed it to the city council yourselves? Because obviously, the suspension of the improvements is not what you want to see, what planning wants to see. Yet if there was no appeal hearing, you would not have the opportunity to bring this before us. Am I correct?
Your question for me?
They're one of you. I just want to know, how would you be addressing this absent the appeal from Creek 21?
If there would not have been an appeal regarding the widening, the planning commission approved the suspension of the improvements. So they would have to follow the typical procedure. They'd enter into an agreement to be required to install the improvements at some future date. That's a.
Okay. And then to our city attorney, could staff not appeal a planning commission's decision to the council?
Staff can do that, but they also have time limitations within which to do that.
But they have the ability to.
They have the ability to appeal it, yes. Anybody can appeal it, including staff. And, but you have, again, certain time limitations on when to do that.
Because I, you know, I'm somewhat frustrated here at the fact that I've just made this argument that we can't really, nor should we be, addressing appeals from the applicant because they aren't the appellant. And yet, we've got a request from staff here to address something that they did not appeal to the commission or to the council either. I just don't know how you do one and not the other.
Well, my question is, why now? Why not later? When we do the rest of the widening project?
Right. This discussion came up in the planning commission meeting. And Commissioner Kerr asked if the improvements had to be constructed now. And, you know, typically, the policy would be that the improvements would be constructed at the time of the development. And as Mr. Portcher mentioned, you know, that's the policy. But he asked me if the improvements had to be installed now for public health. Well, I believe what he asked was, would it create a dangerous situation if the widening was not done now? I had to honestly say, I can't say it would create a dangerous situation if the widening is not done now with, in association with the development. On the other hand, I believe the widening would actually enhance the safety. So I don't know if that was significant in them making their decision to defer the improvements.
Well, the thing that's bothering me is we've got a developer who's going to spend three million dollars on this project and two hundred thousand dollars is going to caught him and walk away. That's a surprise to me. I've had a lot of clients do bigger developments than that, and everybody got a surprise. That never caused them to walk away, but that's their business decision. The other thing is, in some reports you gave us, your feeling was it's really difficult later on to go back to that developer ten years from now and have this wrestling match again, which I suspect is one of the reasons staff would like to get it done now and not have to fight that battle later.
It can be. We've had different situations where installing the improvements, sometimes we've actually had to take legal action. We've had other situations where the property owner cooperated and they were willing to pay their pro-rata share. We've had other situations where we've had to form an assessment district to pay for the improvements. So it's been the whole gamut of experiences. It could be difficult.
My personal opinion is that waiving is out of the question. We're never going to waive that requirement. We can't. It's just we're not going to do that.
I agree.
Everyone's thought that, but, so it's only a question of when. It's not a question of if. And my thought would be, we should get a dedication of that property so we don't have to fight over the property at a future time. And, I don't know, maybe there's a way to share some of the costs of the curb gutters and paving. I don't know. If there's some way to do it to make it palatable for the developer.
I have comments to make on that as well. In a case where development has occurred and curb gutter sidewalk, street lights, and other normal off-site improvements are required of the developer, it's very, very difficult for the city to go back and say, we need to add a third lane or we need to widen the street as long as the individual is just going to sit there. My understanding is that they can sit there for a long, long time and not be required to make any improvement whatsoever without the city going in condemning the property, paying for the right-of-way, and probably paying for the improvements. If they come in with a different design or modification or building improvement of some sense of value, then it can be a condition. So there is a possibility that they could widen and improve this, and it would sit there with one lane. To me, that is an odd condition, but I do agree with Councilmember Kennedy that we have to get the right-of-way immediately. It seems to me, since curb and gutter and sidewalk are in, and the curb and gutter and sidewalk are in in front of the existing businesses, that staff is highly recommending that we widen that street for the benefit of all the traveling public, that it would be appropriate that we would, could require the dedication, a waiver of doing it now with the condition that staff cooperate in some way on the complete block from Village Drive to, what is the street, Westley, first intersection? What's the name of the street? It's Westley on Mojave?
Condor.
Condor. It seems like that there could be something to be worked out so that the construction could be done at one time. The city could share in the cost, whether it be the complete engineering of it. But in fairness, this is not a dirt area where no improvements have been made. Someone expended the money to make the improvements, and we're requiring that to be torn out and redone. And just on the surface, that bothers me. I think that we have some obligation. We obviously want three lanes. We obviously know that Mojave Drive is going to be widened in the future. It seems like if we cooperated with the property owners, we could work together and maybe share some of the costs, but reduce the cost substantially. It needs to be done. I think it could create an awkward situation. Is it going to be dangerous? That's why attorneys argue in court, to have the widening improvement done now. Without a right turn in, right turn out, and an exit on Village to get back to Mojave doesn't seem plausible or safe. But I do agree, we need to get that condition. We're going to widen it. I do agree, we need to get the right-of-way. And I don't see anything wrong with having the lien on the property requiring that because I would be absolutely opposed to simply waiving it and saying curb gutter is there, we're going to leave it there because we know we're going to wait in the future. I think well said. We have to accept reality. So comments from the planning, comments from the city council members? Comments? Any comments? Okay. We have three items before us. Is that correct, Mr. Attorney?
You do. You have three items, three options essentially. You can accept the appeal. You can deny the appeal. You can deny the appeal and adopt staff's recommendation, which is to eliminate the suspension. And if I might, to answer Councilmember McEckern's concerns as to the fact that certainly, planning commission staff or planning staff could have appealed this. My guess, and it's only a guess, is that since Mr. Briggs appealed and showed up and dropped, did his data drop at the planning commission, once there's an appeal before the council, then all of the issues are again on the table as they are this evening. So I don't know if that's a motivation why they didn't appeal or not, but.
You're answering on their behalf? Is that what I'm hearing?
That's a guess. That's a guess. The irony here is.
I'd like on their behalf. Yeah, that's what it sounds like.
I'll answer on their behalf because that's my job.
Our city attorney, I understand what you're saying, but I'm wanting to know, absent the appeal, what would staff have done? It doesn't make any sense. If this is what you want, you should have appealed it to us yourself.
Absolutely agree. And without, with the confusion of Mr. Briggs's attempted withdrawal, you're right. You were stuck at that point with the planning commission decision.
And staff certainly considered appealing ourselves and decided against it, specifically because we want to respect the planning commission's decision. That's what they're there to do, and that's what we would have done. However, like the applicant, when it was reopened, we certainly have the ability to argue for something that we requested in the first place. So we took the same path that the applicant did. So, but no, we, unless there was a true health, safety, welfare issue, your staff is not going to appeal a decision of the planning commission.
If, Mr. Mayor, if we vote to deny the appeal, then what happens is the planning commission's decision stands?
If you do that and don't impose any additional conditions, that's correct. You have, you have the option of denying it and/or.
But that also solves, we don't have to have another debate about single-serve, and I'm not wasting another vote.
No, that's all right.
One of the proposals that if you consider denying the appeal is you still want to impose that condition with respect to the solar, which is an agreement, we believe, between the applicant and Mr. Briggs.
If I may speak on.
I'm going to allow you just a minute. There's been a lot of discussion. Even though the hearing is closed, you may make comments.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to echo what you said. We are required to dedicate the land, and we were, that was always our intention. We know that the future widening could happen when, you know, the other property owners adjacent to us on Mojave Drive will also be doing the same, but today, our issue is the safety and of course, the cost. But the safety is the biggest one, and I don't know if we need to point it out again. I think you've heard our case. But it just, looking at the visual, and if you were going to drive down that lane, you're going to hit that curb. I just, I don't, I don't see it. So we are not opposed to dedicating the land and everything that Mr. Hawks mentioned. We agree to that condition, so we just wanted to state that for the record.
Thank you very much. Any other questions of staff? Any other questions of council members? Okay. You have, Mr. Attorney, so we get this right, we have three issues. Can we take them all at the same time, or do we take them?
You only need to adopt one of the resolutions. I believe the resolution you are considering right now would be the second resolution, which is draft resolution fourteen zero zero seven that has on the heading denying with the addition of the condition that the parties have agreed to pertaining to the solar item. So you would deny, that would essentially uphold the planning commission's suspension, would require the dedication, would then also impose an additional condition of requiring the solar agreement that they have with Mr. Briggs. But essentially, you'd be upholding the planning commission's decision. That one modification.
That's my motion.
We do have a motion by Councilmember.
Well, let me ask one question. Is there.
Second before we do? Can we have a second, please? I don't want it to die for lack of a second. Okay. We have motion and second. Discussion, Mr. Kennedy.
Is there an implication in all of this that when, if we say let's, we deny it and it's suspended, is there an implication that because this is a new development since the most recent general plan update, that this developer will be required to bear the entire cost? Are we going to have some discussion about sharing costs? How are we going to deal with that? Is that?
I, the resolution as drafted right now would impose upon the developer the requirement to fund the improvements at such time as the suspension expires.
The only options that we have that I can see is to continue the matter and let staff negotiate with the individuals. And we don't know how long that will take, or even if it's reasonable to do so. The other is to take whatever action, and at the end of it, the end, council members may make individual comments in regard to what their beliefs are. You can give direction to staff, but it is going to require the majority of the council to agree with that.
I have a question. So you're saying we're looking at resolution fourteen zero zero seven, but there's a lot of them. There's A, B, and C.
That is correct.
Which one are you looking at?
We're looking at the second one, which is B, and it is the one that has in the title of it just the words denying, as opposed to the other one that says denying with suspension canceled. You were looking at the second version.
It says, it says a conditional use permit to allow for the sale of beer and wine within three hundred feet of the residence. So that's not the same thing as a single-serve, correct?
Single-serve is in the next paragraph, a next sentence or two.
Okay.
But the point is, if we deny.
We deny the appeal, the planning commission's decision stands, and in their decision, they removed that. They didn't allow, am I right, Doug, when I say that?
The single-serve?
Yeah.
They removed that, or, excuse me.
They did not allow that variance.
Did not allow that variance.
That's correct.
They took that out.
Yeah.
You can tell us that, but.
But it's not in the resolution as I read it.
Just, I don't want to do the attorney's job, but just for clarity's sake, perhaps it would be good, since there's really three issues. One is the simple denial and requiring solar. The second being the issue of the traffic lane, and the third being the issue of single-serve. Perhaps if the person who made the motion would make the motion clear on which way each of those three items are going, so that you know exactly what you're voting on, and we can piece together the final action for the minutes.
Okay. Well, my motion would be in line with what our city attorney said, would go with B, resolution number fourteen dash zero zero seven, denying with the addition of the condition as proposed by Briggs' law to require the solar. It would uphold the planning commission's decision to allow for this development without a variance for the sale of single-serve alcoholic beverages. And it would uphold the planning commission's decision to suspend the improvements with respect to Mojave.
Ryan, would you also put in there that we would get, we would obtain a dedication?
Dedication right of way.
I think, is that a part of the project?
That is a part of it, but let's make the record clear and indicate that as part of your motion as well.
And that it would include the dedication of that area for the ultimate improvements, but it does uphold the suspension that the planning commission approved.
I second that. I second.
But to be painfully clear, yes to solar, no to single-serve, and later to the lane to be paid for by the developer.
With dedication.
Right, with dedication.
Dedication now.
Motion by Mayor Proton McEckern, second by Councilmember Kennedy. Motion carries unanimously.
Mr. Mayor, I think in the spirit of what we were talking about, though, I don't know that the council would be, if there was something that could be worked out between the applicant and staff with respect to ultimately how that, those improvements are paid for, since there's curb gutter and sidewalk already in. I think we all kind of thought, well, maybe there ought to be some participation because we're asking them to tear out something that's already in that we put in. Is that correct, Doug, back in nineteen sixty-six?
Nineteen sixty-six, yeah.
So I don't know how you go about doing that, but.
That would, that would be okay to negotiate soon, sooner rather than later.
Well, I think just the very fact that staff can take another look at that, knowing that it would be in everyone's interest to add the lane for the full block from Village to condo. I think that would simply be in everybody's interest. That's not giving a direction to or not. I think staff can meet with the applicant just to see if there's a possibility of working out some kind of an agreement. If there's not, that's the end of the story. If there is, staff can bring that back to the city council.
And my guess is this development will be so successful that when the time comes, this will be chump change.
Okay. That concludes that item. Thank you very much for the participation. This is extremely difficult to get through because of the complications. We are now on the consent. A motion to approve consent, Callender?
We have two more public hearing items.
I'm sorry?
There are two public hearing items to follow.
Oh, no. You're absolutely right. Sorry, Mr. Guthard. We have a public hearing in proposed.
Hey, hey, what are you doing, Diane? What are you doing? You denied their request. Otherwise, they may have left those there for you.
The next item, which is a public hearing, is, I'm going to go ahead and read while you're packing up. Proposed facility use fee resolution number fourteen dash zero one three, existing resolution number zero one dash thirty-one, for a few minor fee increases. Any questions of Mr. Guthard? I'm going to open the public hearing. I do not have a card on this, do I, Madam clerk?
I don't believe so.
Think so? No one to speak? Public hearing is closed. Action, council?
Motion by Councilmember Vias, second by Councilmember Kennedy. Motion carries unanimously.
Second public hearing for Mr. Chris Portcher, acting director of development. Development Code Amendment to Allow For the Establishment of Solar Power Generation Facilities as a Conditional Use. Then the single-family residential R1 district and a site plan conditional use permit mitigated negative declaration and associated development agreement to construct and operate a phased sixty-acre, ten-megawatt solar-powered generation facility on single-family residential district land on properly located north of Palmdale Road, east of the. east of the logical extension of Masonal and Avenue, south of the logical extension of Seneca Road, west of the logical extension of Topaz Road, applicant Adelanto Greenworks One LLC. Bringing to the council's attention that there was an addition submitted, addition. Additional information submitted by Southern California Edison. Please take note of their, their written proposal. Any questions of staff at this time? So you know, questions of staff, I'm going to open the public hearing on this item. I do not have a card. I do not believe, I don't see it here. This is B two. I have two cards. Sorry about that. Mr. Aaron, sorry, can't pronounce, can't read the last name, and Garrett Bean. Both gentlemen are here. All right, go ahead. And you are, sir?
My name's Garrett Bean.
Okay.
I'm with Silverado Power. We put together a presentation to kind of go through this with you, but in the essence of time, I'll just kind of show you a couple of quick pictures and then if you guys have any questions, you guys can ask them. Let's see. I'm going to, going to jump through here. Hopefully it goes. There we go. We selected a site that is just north of the analog, or I'm sorry, the Victor substation. It's disturbed land. It's currently being dumped on just debris and other stockpiling. It's surrounded by transmission infrastructure. What you can see there is multiple lines that, with easements up to 250 feet wide that surround the property. There's a picture, a couple of pictures, one looking from the Victor substation, the other one looking south towards the Victor substation. So you can see we're completely surrounded by lines. We think this is a great spot for solar. It makes sense. As part of our proposal, we will be subcontracting to local businesses. We've already started doing that. Sales and use taxes that we expect to see around $170,000 generated from the panels and everything put in for the development. We've agreed to a development services agreement to offset any additional potential impacts, fiscal impacts to the city. And indirect and induced spending is expected to be around $500,000. So we'll keep it simple and if you guys have any questions, please let me know.
Thank you.
Eric, have you, have you seen this letter from Southern California Edison?
Yes, that's from their public affairs department. We spoke with them today. They had not been in contact with their real properties division that we're currently working with, so we are allocating over the rights ways that they need. We've been working on them, working on that with them for about four months, six months now.
Thank you.
Our city attorney, do we have all the standard indemnification agreements that would remove the city?
We have, we are entering into a standard form development agreement and it requires them to basically cover the city in connection with all of these issues. Yes.
Okay. Anyone, any questions of the applicant? No questions, the applicant? Thank you very much. I'm going to close this hearing. Question to the attorney. We have ordinance number two-three-one-three, ordinance number two-three-one-four, resolution number fourteen point oh-one-seven, resolution number fourteen oh-one-eight. These resolutions, what act, does this have to be taken separate?
We have to introduce each ordinance separately because you have to read the ordinance title and then have a motion to waive further reading.
Of the ordinance?
And there's a negative deck, which I would have you consider as the first item.
But would you want to approve the resolutions until the second reading of the ordinance?
You can approve those all right now. The development agreement and the first ordinance does not become effective until after the reading of the second.
So even though the council may take an action on them, they're really not effective until the second reading and adoption of the ordinance?
That is correct.
All right, okay. Questions, no questions of staff? We are, the chair's open for motion.
Mayor Cox, I'll read the ordinance.
Thank you.
Titles. Ordinance twenty-three thirteen, in ordinance of the city council of the city of Victorville, approving the municipal code amendment portion of case PLN thirteen dash zero 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 one-three to allow for the establishment of solar-powered generation facilities as a conditional use within the single-family residential R1 district, city of Victorville.
All right, I think for clarification, we should take these separately. This all, the chair's open for a motion, ordinance number two-three-one-three.
And if I might, I would even ask that you first approve the mitigated negative declaration and take a motion to approve that.
All right, so for the record, we'll need a motion and second to approve the mitigated negative declaration.
And if the council could take voice votes on these items, because there are so many.
All right.
I'll make the motion. Second.
Want a roll call or?
If you can just say all in favor or?
All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Aye. It's unanimous.
Now, the second motion would be to adopt the ordinance as previously read and waive further reading.
Move and waive further reading of ordinance twenty-three thirteen. Second.
We have motion and second. Do you need a roll call vote? Or do you just all in favor say aye?
No, I don't, I don't need a roll call.
All in favor say aye.
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 Next item, ordinance number twenty-three fourteen.
In ordinance of the city council of the city of Victorville, approving the development agreement portion of case PLN thirteen dash zero 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 one-three between the city of Victorville and Adelanto Greenworks One LLC in connection with a phased 60-acre, 10-megawatt solar-powered generation facility on single-family residential district land.
Okay.
I'll move for adoption of ordinance twenty-three fourteen, waive further reading.
Second.
We have motion and second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous. There are no no's.
Clarification, that'd be introduction rather than.
Introduction, I'm sorry. Introduction. Resolution number fourteen dash zero one-seven.
I do not need to read the title of the resolution.
Then we want to do the same way? Okay.
Can we approve both resolutions at the same time?
Certainly could.
I'll move approval of resolution fourteen dash zero one-seven and dash zero one-eight.
Second. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Ayes, ayes, ahs, or no no's. It's unanimous. Consent calendar.
Motion by Councilmember Vias, second by Councilmember Kennedy. Mayor Cox, thank you. Motion carries unanimously.
Written communication, D one.
Motion by Councilmember Kennedy, second by Councilmember Vias. Motion carries unanimously.
D two, resolution. EWD fourteen dash zero zero four, entitled a resolution of Victorville Water District initiating proceedings to fix levy collect standby charges for water improvement district number two, this period thirteen fourteen.
Motion by Councilmember Kennedy, second by Councilmember Garcia.
Next item, item number three, home loan security grant.
Excuse me, Mayor Cox, I need to get votes from Councilmember Garcia and Councilmember Kennedy on that item. Thank you. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you for keeping us straight. This was from Captain Sam Lachia, our fire, uh, police department, HSGP two oh one three expenditure plan.
Motion by Mayor Protim McAcrin, second by Councilmember Garcia. Mayor Cox, thank you. Motion carries unanimously.
Item four, request by El Supa Grocery Store to reduce the road portion of the development impact fee for the construction of 6,400 square foot storage area.
Mayor, I've read this and I couldn't see enough there that compelled me to do anything. Did I miss something? There's a letter, but he doesn't specify anything and.
There was a request by the developer. They're already, I think they've already built the addition. They believe that because it is simply storage and not new commercial business area, that they would like some consideration. Staff looked at it and we don't make this distinction, any other developments. I, I can tell you that staff looked at the, at the store layout and it would be difficult for them to convert this to commercial at a later date, but certainly you open yourselves up to, you know, the question every time a new business comes to town. Are you going to argue with them over how much of their area is storage versus commercial? It would be setting a dangerous precedent, but this is, kind of came up as an, an addition to the store. That's why it kind of stands out, so.
Storage involves truck traffic, doesn't it?
Yeah, but, but we've done this before. We've waived development impact fees on the trailer park. That said that they were just building a gymnasium and it was going to not occur any additional traffic and staff recommended that we do it. So what's the difference?
Uh, the difference is this is new commercial business. It's not a fenced area with a set number of customers.
But how is the storage going to create more traffic?
Uh, storage isn't necessarily going to create more traffic, so they make a correct argument by saying that. What we don't have control over is if that will always be storage and how you determine in future developments of any kind, what area is storage and what area is, is commercial.
I'm not sure that I agree or disagree with the staff, but the earlier explanation was that currently in that store with, with a retail use must have had a storage area inside. They build a new storage area that is now retail, therefore more foot traffic, more customers, more trucks. And therefore, staff felt that this was a legitimate request to pay this fee.
Staff isn't making a recommendation on this. It was a request from the developer. Then the staff does not have the ability, per the code, to make this modification, so it has to come to the council.
And they just asked for eighty percent.
Chris, if you could come up and explain the, the eighty percent number. I don't know exactly the, the root of that, of that determination.
I was just merely trying to contact the applicant and ask if he had a number in mind and eighty percent was thrown out by me saying, what are you asking for? It, it can be, you can almost argue it both ways, as Ms. Vias is pointing out. It's difficult to say whether it will or won't add trips. They did have previous storage area. They are expanding into that storage area now. They are doing that with a tortilla area, a meat department, and a bakery, similar to the back of Costco. Does that add more trips? It might, sure. They have, they're offering more products and services. But how do you figure out how many trips that is? And that, that, not sure how you would do that anyway.
Because the hospital made a, made quite a presentation and it was convincing. I think they should do that if, if they want us to waive div. There's nothing there that was very convincing.
Yeah, you're, you're talking about now making tortillas in the back of the storage area. My understanding was a storage area is like, you know, like a shed that's going to keep some cans in it. So now, I would like to make a motion to table the item and if El Supa wants to come back and make a presentation so that we can. Okay.
Yeah, and again, they are adding a separate storage area. They have converted this area that previously was storage in the building to the tortilla and the bakery, that area.
Have pictures so I can see?
No, just the floor plan of the, I know, nothing of the prior use, no.
Gentlemen, this is your request. If you please give your name and who you represent.
My name is Dave Redonovich. I represent El Supa. We are adding a warehouse to the building. And what the warehouse is going to be able to do is it's actually going to reduce truck traffic to our, to our building. We'll be able to take more, more in that truck rather than, and, and put more in our warehouse rather than have multiple trucks on a daily basis coming in to fill, to fill the shelves. So we will be able to have full trucks coming in, have a place to put our merchandising that's not on our shelves, our backup merchandise to be able then to bring it onto the floor. It will actually reduce truck traffic into that area. We're asking for a reduction, knowing that we are going to have trucks and, and customers coming to the property, but we feel that the amount of money that's being requested for us is a little high. So we're asking for a reduction because of the cost of, you know, nine dollars and seventy-five cents a square foot to add an addition is very costly. The first set of fees, as you can see, there's police fees, there's fire fees, there's road fees, there's all kinds of fees associated with the project. And that's just the use of, of just to get traffic to the store is, is a pretty substantial amount of fees. And we're asking for a reduction. We're asking, if you look at the fee, the schedule, you have the DIF road fees at forty-eight thousand nine hundred twenty-eight dollars.
Does it?
Correct. So that fee is saying because of the square footages that we're adding, we're going to bring more customers to the site. The initial design and the use of the, of the building was a grocery store to begin with.
I'm trying to find out what reduction you're asking for.
We're asking for eighty percent of that, just that portion of the fee.
So eighty percent of the forty-eight thousand?
Correct. We are not disputing the fire fee, the police fee, or the other fee on there. We're only just that portion of the fee, the forty-eight thousand in additional fee.
A clarification, I think they're asking for a twenty percent reduction of the fee be set at eighty percent of the current amount. Is that correct?
No, we're asking.
Oh, you're asking for eighty percent?
We're asking for eighty percent reduction and pay twenty percent of that fee.
Right.
Do we have any way to justify doing such a thing? I mean, is?
The question, the question we've had and we haven't been able to answer, excuse me, Mayor, was, is that, where are those fees? How do you generate those fees? How do you come, how does the city justify that amount for those fees? Where is that established?
And I can answer that. The development impact fee is exhaustive study of all the infrastructure needed citywide for the next, I think it's a twenty-year study, and all of the development that we anticipate during that time. And every development that comes in pays that same nine seventy-five a square foot. In this case, it's an addition, so it, it stands out as a little bit odd, considering it's an addition of storage. But had they built this at the time the building was built, or if they were building the entire grocery store now, it would all be included. They would pay nine seventy-five per square foot regardless of whether it was storage or, or commercial space. The two Walmarts that came in, you know, were required to pay a similar fee, nine seventy-five per square foot, as has every other business.
And those fees are established pursuant to a fully-blown nexus study as required by law? So you, your fees are justified based on a nexus study?
See, I'm sorry, I had asked staff, when the hospital came in, we did not have a category for hospitals. It was categorized as retail, I believe, which put it at the highest amount. And after some studies, it was the basis for reducing that. In this one, I asked staff if we had a different fee for the storage area. And of course, storage areas can be large, they can be small, they can have, they could be trip-generated, they can have trucks coming in. There's no way to quantify that. And so we do not have that in our code. I asked if they could check and find if other cities had the storage area different. And I didn't get an answer, but the belief was that it's.
Yeah, I asked Mr. Barter to check on that and he did that today.
And I didn't get the answer, so.
Yes, the, I did have Jennifer Little contact Hasferia, Apple Valley, Adelanto, Barstow, Ontario, and Rancho Cucamonga, and none of them separate out storage area from regular commercial. They don't give reductions. They don't reduce the amount of div charged for a commercial project for storage area.
Okay, thank you, Chris. Do you have any further questions of the applicant? Thank you very much. You have something else to add?
Yeah, I mean, Frank Aguirre with El Supa as well, community relations manager, government affairs. Just wanted to, to verify, this is something, this is not something new the city has done. And want to make sure that we are also given a fair chance. We may not have a pretty PowerPoint presentation like the hospital did, but nonetheless, we do feel that the fees do not make sense versus the storage space. Thank you.
Thank you.
I, I just think that, you know, we made exceptions for the hospital, we made exceptions for the trailer park.
For the who?
The trailer park, the trailer park.
Mobile Home Park West.
Mobile Home Park.
I, I know what you're.
They wanted to build the gymnas, when they built the gymnasium.
Oh, 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 oh.
You know, and it, it just seems like we're cherry picking who we, we do this for. So to me, you know, I was against it in the beginning, but now I feel like, you know, we, we already set a precedence where, and, and to me, like, it made sense that they're not going to have as many trucks coming in if they can store it. And the more trucks that we can get off of Bear Valley Road, to me, is the better. And, you know, especially pollution-wise and everything else, I, I think we've done it for others and I don't see why we couldn't do it for them. And, and they're not asking for the fire fees or anything like that. They're just asking for the transportation part of it.
And I'm in agreement to that.
Wait just a second. Go ahead, Ms. Councilmember.
And I agree with every word that Council, uh, Vias just said.
I don't want to end up in a debate because I'll close it, but if you have a comment or a question. or a question?
Just one last thing. I know staff said 80%. You know, it doesn't have to be 80%. We're just looking for some sort of reduction. So I want to make that clear that we're not sticking by 80%. No, you know, it's, yeah.
Just looking for relief of something that's reasonable.
Yes.
When I discussed this with the city manager, he pointed out that it would be very difficult, can be done, be very difficult if you say a storage area has a different fee. It's almost going to be on a case-by-case basis because most storage areas easily convert to a retail area. And so it is conceivable that you would have someone declare half the area as storage and then convert it to retail the following day. There would have to be a situation that would be unique where it could not easily become the retail area. And I did look at the store, the way this is constructed. It could. It could be converted, but it would be very, very difficult. It really could be. It truly is a storage area if you look at it. I think that because this was a vacant building, they have paid the fees, they have taken into consideration they're going to reduce the truck traffic, that there should be a reduction just in the storage area and nothing else. However, I think the 80% is excessive. That we can agree on.
I make a motion for a 50% reduction of the $48,000.
I, do you have a second?
Motion by Councilmember Vias.
Motion second. I would like to ask for an addition to the motion before we vote on it, that we consider, that we have staff consider the storage areas so that we do not get pushed into the corner where a business proposes a false storage area to reduce the fee.
If I, if I might, we're, yeah, we're in discussion and when the item for the Mobile Home Park came before us, it was unique. It was something we'll never see again. It's something that you won't, we haven't ever seen. Now, we're at third, this is the third request to either reduce or get rid of or do something with development impact fees. We owe 11-plus million dollars to Sandbag on an interchange we just built. I'm not saying that we shouldn't do something here, but we better get a hold of this quickly because it's spiraling out of control when we have, we've had three requests and it's something we'll never see again. It just doesn't make any sense.
Well, that's why I didn't want to open it up in the very beginning. And as far as the Mobile Home Park, they said that they were using it for a gymnasium. How many people keep their gym membership? You know that they're going to turn it into a party house and create more traffic. So, I mean, and we approved that and the next thing we know, we approved the St. Mary's thing. So we opened up a count of worms and now all of a sudden El Supa comes in and it's a no. I don't agree with that. I think that we've set the precedence and we've taken it case-by-case and they said that they're going to keep more trucks off the street, they're going to create less traffic, and, you know, just like we took the others at face value, why aren't we taking them?
We have a motion and second. Clarification, since we had discussion, the motion and the second is to reduce the cost by 50%, is that correct?
Correct. Motion carries with Councilmember Kennedy voting no.
And Councilmembers, just for clarification, staff agreed with everything El Supa said as well. Our concern is opening it up to, you know, any other business that comes in to try to designate an area for storage and get a reduction of fees.
I think this is something that staff needs to look at because I think it could get out of line real easily. So I think that it's something we need to look at. If I'm on track, and I believe I am, Southern California Logistics Airport awarded contract to Jim's Environmental Management Services in the amount of $2,183,532.73.
Motion by Mayor Pro Tem McEckern, second by Councilmember Vias. Motion carries unanimously.
Item six, action plans to achieve three-year goals from the strategic planning session.
And Mr. Mayor, members of the council, this item was born out of our strategic planning that we did in January. You set forth six goals. We separated out streets from one section because it seemed to make sense to us to separate it out a little bit. So the management staff met for an entire afternoon to discuss each of these items and how we would bring back these issues for the council because as we worked together on that strategic plan, we wanted to continue to work together on these action plans. So we spoke at length about what might each one of these items look like as it comes forward and we basically took notes and kind of presenting those to you today. This is really more about the schedule than it is about the bullet points. Some of these bullet points you may have heard during that strategic planning, others you may not have. So what we were attempting to do is put together a schedule. The next, the first meeting that we would have is on Safer Community, April 22nd, and you can see the bullet points in this plan as to the types of things we're going to talk about. We may add things, we may take things away. It's intended to be a public discussion right here in the chambers about all of these issues, trying to get to a safer community. Then on April 29th, we've got a follow-up regarding development standards as well as combining it, some of the discussion on the prettier, cleaner community with pride of ownership because we thought those two things tied together. So we're asking for your approval tonight, but it's really more an approval of our proposed schedule than these individual bulleted items.
Mr. Robertson, if I could ask a question? We got a letter from the Building Industry Association just this evening with respect to the workshop that we're going to hold on the 29th. I think first I want to make sure, the Chair of the Planning Commission requested that the Planning Commission be involved in any of the future strategic planning workshops that dealt or had something to do with their jurisdiction where they might have to make a decision at some future date, understanding that both the workshop on the 22nd and the 29th might ultimately have some involvement by that body. I think it would behoove us to make sure we include them. Is that possible?
That's absolutely possible.
Okay.
Is that something you would ask for it to be a joint meeting or an invitation to the Planning Commission?
Well, I'll defer to the mayor on that. I just think they ought to be here. I think the Chair of the Planning Commission asked to be a part of it.
Yes, I agree.
I don't know if it needs to be joint, joint. However, that needs to be worked out. But also, you know, obviously the BIA wants to be heard. They've outlined an ability or their proposal on when they plan to submit. I'd just ask that staff work with them and allow them to present that and that they are allowed to be heard on the 29th.
If you're going to request participation by the Planning Commission, then I strongly recommend it be a joint meeting. If they were just here, they were going to have a Brown Act violation problem.
I agree. It'd be a joint meeting and advertised as a joint meeting. In regard to these, they could change. I doubt it. I'd like them, I'd ask the City Council approve this in concept and set those two dates as special meetings with the planning commission.
And is there any recommendation as to what time those meetings will start?
Our most council member time is 6:00. Is that okay?
That's what we intended when we set the schedule, yes.
Okay. They have a motion and second?
Motion by Mayor Pro Tem McEckern, second by Councilmember Vias.
And we will certainly meet with BIA ahead of time.
Motion carries unanimously.
Item, agenda item number seven, SCLA has a book of reimbursement from fuel fees collected, $97,000, and so on and so on. Projected cost of $97,601. Millionaire.
Motion by Mayor Pro Tem McEckern, second by Councilmember Vias. Motion carries unanimously.
We are at the public comment section of the agenda at the present time. This is where individuals may appear upon the City Council and speak on any item. There will not be dialogue between the council and those individuals simply because it's not an agenda item would be in violation of the Brown Act. We have two cards, I believe, Derek King, Herbert Baird. King, how are you this night?
I'm doing pretty good. And yourself? Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council. As principal, I am here on behalf of Excelsior Charter Schools, my students and parents to seek the assistance of the City Council to remedy a foreseeable safety hazard. The foreseeable safety hazard in question is the lack of a fence surrounding the large tract of derelict housing along Nevada and George Streets on Southern California Logistics Airport. Excelsior's Aviation Medicine and Engineering Academy campus is located on SCLA where Shepherd Middle School had previously been located. At a recent joint City Council and Planning Commission meeting, I was extremely happy to hear that our city's focus encompasses both the overall sense of safety of our citizenry as well as the commitment to an overall safer city. Every day between 60 and 80 of my students utilize the VVTA bus, which comes every half hour on the hour. The bus stop is approximately 20 feet away from this large tract of unrestricted derelict housing as shown in the picture I provided. To date, I've had zero incidences with regard to the housing not being fenced. However, I am convinced that a serious incident or accident involving this derelict housing is foreseeable. I strongly believe that it is prudent to act before an incident occurs. The appearance erodes the family's sense of safety. The unfenced existence creates an actual safety hazard. Fencing and shading this specific tract will at minimum provide a physical barrier which lessens the likelihood of an incident or accident. As principal, I believe that even before instruction, my first job is the safety of my students. I'm requesting that the City of Victorville, excuse me, I'm requesting that the Victorville City Council take the immediate action of extending the fence that stops halfway along Nevada to George and on to Air Expressway. Thank you.
Thank you. It will be referred to our City Manager and Keith Messler and they'll report back to the council on this. I'm sure someone will contact you. Thank you for your input. Herbert Baird, come up, please.
Good afternoon. Hello, my name is Herbert Baird and I represent a new organization by the name of Softy, reaching out for transitioning youth. I address Mayor Cox and the City Council members. I'm a local resident of Victorville and a co-founder of my organization. We have volunteered in this community for several years, serving the San Bernardino County Youth Accountability Board, tutoring, mentoring, and excursions. We now have plans to open a youth residential facility and youth camps. Softy has now planned a blood drive with the American Red Cross and a fundraising event on Saturday, May 17th, 2014, from 11:00 a.m. to 4:00 at Mojave Navarils Regional Park. We would love to extend an invitation and your participation, support, and partnership on that day by your attendance and a brief message to all youth and how we, as a community, are united to support and assist the lives and efforts of our young teens in our communities. Please contact us at your earliest convenience concerning your support and attendance. Thank you very much as we dedicate our lives to serving the needs of our youth in our community.
Thank you, Mr. Baird.
I can leave some flyers and my contact. Thank you very much.
I believe that's all the cards that I have. Do I have anyone else to address the council at this time? Next item on the agenda is report from City Manager.
Just one item. Once again this year, I'll be participating in the St. Mary's Foundation Men Who Cook event.
What?
It's Men Who Cook. Men Who Cook, yes.
Men Who Cook?
Cook, yes. Men Who Cook.
What's that?
Men in the kitchen, if you want to call it that, yes. I got roped in, I mean, I volunteered to do it last year when my other three local city managers, the Town Manager of Apple Valley, agreed to do it and they all bailed out on me this year, so I will be the only city manager there. But I am there once again making my dough-bake cookies, which were, I think, the favorite just behind Frank's chocolate martinis last year. He had alcohol in his, so it was a little bit unfair. But if any of you would like to come out, there's about 20 cooks, many of them making the same dishes they did last year because I think most of us really only know one or two recipes. So most of my other recipes that I have involve one or two ingredients. They're fantastic, but it's only one or two ingredients, not that exciting. So next, not this coming Saturday, but next Saturday, April 12th, at the Hilton Garden Inn this year. So invite you all to come out and enjoy my cookies.
Now, Doug, a good city manager would delegate some of this stuff and I, there is a rumor that your assistant city manager has quite the chili that he could cook, so just thinking for you next year.
If Keith wants to come and compete against the mayor of Apple Valley in his firehouse chili, you could probably do that, although I was disappointed that last year it was really just a display. There was no competition at all.
Hmm, must have been aged. That means cold. Well, just remember my comment, what?
You know, they're building a hospital in our town, so I feel I should support them.
Oh, great, great move. You have the reports from the City Manager. Reports from the council. Start on my left, Councilmember Garcia. Mr. Cackron?
Just real quick, I went to the reopening of the recycling facility behind the old H&amp;E Alpha Anacapa. Staff welcomed me as I turned in a lot of e-waste from my own business that had been accumulating and took pictures of me after I'd returned from the gym, so hopefully those don't make it into any local publication.
What? Wouldn't be admitted. Councilmember Vias?
I'd just like to say that I wanted to reiterate Mayor Pro Tem McEckern's comments regarding staff needs to get a handle on the development impact fees and consider taking the language out on a case-by-case basis and just make it across the board because I think it's going to get very sticky when you keep bringing it back to the council. So just consider that.
Councilmember Kennedy?
Two things. One, I'd like to congratulate the mayor and his cohorts. I think the Pro Tem was with him and they took the trophy back from Apple Valley. The one noticeable difference in that team was that I wasn't on it this year. I'm afraid that tells us something. The other thing, and I'm going to try some diplomacy instead of preaching, I would like this council to revisit that single-serve law, ordinance. I think we've created an ordinance that's not dealing with the problem. The problem is still with us, so this ordinance isn't fixing it. And what it's doing is it's creating an unfair advantage that can't really be justified. So I'd like to see us find ways to use it as a powerful tool against the offending entities and not just an arbitrary tool where it's not needed. So I'd like to ask if we could please agendize some discussion of that and reconsideration of that ordinance.
I think, I agree. The storage area should be looked at. For items that, we have virtually a new council, we have a lot of changes, we've gone through a major recession, we're looking at things differently. There is no reason not to revisit some of these issues that we are aware of and may feel that whether it needs to change or not, we at least need to become familiar with it to the point that we understand why it's on the books and that we feel fully comfortable in supporting it and defending it, or if not, we need to make modifications where we can do that. I have 10 or 12 items and I wouldn't dare bring one of them up tonight, so this means adjourned.